Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Are we ready? Welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the San Rafael City Council. Today is Monday, March sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. I request the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Bushy.
Present.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Vice Mayor Yaren Scalati.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. All five of us are here. Welcome, we're glad you're here, either in person or virtually listening in. Tonight in the chamber, I understand that there are individuals who want to address the council during public open time regarding housing. As it may be a first for some folks here tonight, I'm going to take a moment and describe how council meetings operate. In California, local governments adhere to the Brown Act, which mandates that only items on our agenda can be discussed by the council or the staff, as this ensures maximum transparency and community engagement. At the beginning of our meeting, we always, always, always have a section called "open time for public expression", where anyone can give comments about anything for two minutes. The council is interested in what you have to say, but we cannot respond to any requests or answer any questions that are raised during open time for public expression. We look forward to listening intently, as we always do, and appreciate the fact that you've made an effort to be here tonight to share your thoughts. As our meetings have a hybrid format, I'll first take public comment when we get to that part of the meeting from those in the chamber before turning to the people who are calling in. We include a land acknowledgement as part of our opening, as it's an important part of this opening of our meeting. So we acknowledge that the present-day city of San Rafael is traditionally home to the Coast Miwok people, many of whom today are tribal citizens of the Federated Indians of Great Ranche Ria. We thank the original caretakers of this land and honor their continuing involvement in stewardship practices that benefit us all. So before we start the public open time, the city clerk will describe how people can participate in tonight's meeting virtually.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Before we begin, I'd like to announce that tonight's city council meeting will include Spanish-language simultaneous and consecutive interpretation provided by qualified interpreters on the Spanish channel now through the completion of the city manager and city council reports. If you're watching on Zoom, you can join the Spanish channel by clicking on the interpretation icon in the Zoom toolbar. It looks like a globe. And we've posted a link to the Zoom meeting and the description of the video on YouTube. If you're attending in person and don't have access to the Zoom meeting from your mobile device, please come see me and I will get you set up with a device so that you can listen to the meeting in Spanish. As a reminder, we ask that everyone participating tonight speak slowly to allow our interpreter to effectively express her comments.
Antes de comenzar la reunión, nos gustaría anunciar que la reunión del Consejo Municipal de esta noche incluirá interpretación simultánea y constitutiva en español proporcionada por intérpretes calificados en el Canal de Español desde ahora hasta la finalización de los informes del administrador y de la ciudad de los concejales. Si están viendo a través de Zoom, pueden unirse al Canal de Español haciendo clic en el icono de interpretación que aparece en la barra de funciones de Zoom, que ahora parece como un globo terráqueo. Y también hemos publicado un enlace a la reunión de Zoom en la descripción del video en YouTube. Si asiste a persona en esta reunión y no tiene acceso a la reunión de Zoom desde su dispositivo móvil, puede venir a verme y yo le configuraré un dispositivo para que pueda escuchar la reunión en español. Como recordatorio, también les pedimos que todos los participantes de esta noche hablen lentamente para permitir que nuestro intérprete exprese sus comentarios de manera efectiva.
This meeting tonight is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube, and members of the public can provide public comment by phone by calling six six nine four 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 nine one seven one using the meeting ID eight four two three two five nine one eight five one and pressing star nine to raise your hand for comments. Or you can comment and watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda and use the raise hand feature through Zoom. If you experience any technical difficulties, please email me at city.clerk@cityofsanrefel.org. Displayed on the podium and the projector is a two-minute timer to help you stay within the two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you live in, or if you're from outside of San Rafael. We are offering closed captioning for this evening's meeting on Zoom, and you can select "live transcript" button on Zoom to enable this feature. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. So the first part, as I said earlier, of our evening tonight is open time for public expression. There are two ways you can give a comment. I have one comment card, so we'll start with this person. Dalma, if you want to come on down. And then after Dalma speaks, if anyone else is interested, they can come down after they have finished. Welcome. Go ahead, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. I'm gonna be speaking in Spanish. Mi nombre es Dalma, yo trabajo para la oficina de Legal Aid of Marin. Legal Aid of Marin se dedica a brindar acceso al sistema de justicia civil a los residentes de bajo ingresos vulnerables y desentendidos del condado de Marin. Nuestro enfoque es ofrecer soluciones prácticas a los problemas legales de nuestros clientes. A través de servicios legales de alta calidad, nuestro enfoque implica tanto la representación directa como la promoción de pólizas donde defendemos a los clientes históricamente marginados y llevamos a sus voces a los lesgilladores para promover comunidades inclusivas y equitativas. No somos consultadores pagados ni cabilderos y nunca cobramos a nuestros clientes por nuestros servicios. Nuestro trabajo destaca los efectos adversos de pólizas anteriores, como la línea roja, la protección insuficiente de los inquilinos y la vivienda inadecuada, lo que resultó en alquileres altos y una crisis de vivienda. Nuestros inquilinos, a lo largo plazo, que son predominantemente comunidades de color, se ven afectados de manera desproporcionada por esta crisis. Y a menudo enfrentan el desplazamiento de sus hogares sin culpa propia. Como resultado, se enfrentan a un mercado de alquiler radicalmente cambiado, con alquileres extorventantes y poco inventario. Lo que obliga a muchos a mudarse fuera de sus comunidades, fuera de Marin, incluso a quedar sin hogar y con la única opción de vivir en sus automóviles. Como uno de los condados más segregados de California, es esencial que San Rafael tome medidas para evitar la pérdida de miembros valiosos de la comunidad y trabajadores sociales. Desafortunadamente, la experiencia de los residentes del edificio cuatrocientos en el Canal no son únicas. Escuchamos historias similares de inquilinos en todo San Rafael todos los días, pero carecemos de las herramientas para evitar su inevitable desplazamiento. Se ha demostrado que fortalecer las protecciones de los inquilinos e implementar un tope en los aumentos de alquiler estabiliza a familias y a las comunidades. Todos los inquilinos del condado de Marin tienen el derecho a una vivienda asequible, segura y habitable, libre de acoso, discriminación y desalojos arbitrarios. Invitamos a este consejo a que reconozca este derecho y trabaje con nosotros para desarrollar protecciones que logren este objetivo. En una nota personal,
Gracias.
Estoy muy alegre que las personas están aquí diciendo sus necesidades. Gracias por estar aquí.
Thank you, Dalma. So possible two minutes, there is a timer up there, so but wait one moment because we need to have the translation.
Well, good evening. My name is Dalma and I'm here representing and on behalf of Legal Aid. And I will be speaking in Spanish. Our focus is to give representation directly and look after policies and defend the population who historically have been migrants. We carry their voices. We carry their voices to the legislators as promoters and advocates to the communities to assure equality and justice and inclusivity. We are not consultants that get paid, will not and we never charge any of our clients for any of our services. We're here to provide protection to those renters who excuse me, our renters at a long term have been known to be predominantly in communities or belong to communities of color and they're the ones that are being affected the most disproportionately due to this crisis. And a lot of the things that have been going on have radically changed, have made radical changes to our communities and have forced a lot of our members of the communities to leave out of the community, leave Marin. And we have to be sure that we're protecting the members of our community from losing their jobs. They are essential workers and we need them to leave local. And unfortunately, the experience that we've experienced and the selling of four hundred building in Canal is not the only one of its kind. And we have heard throughout history very similar stories about renters in San Rafael. Every day, we hear these stories. And it's been demonstrated that we need to refortify and protect our renters. We have to limit these rent increases to have stability within our families and side of our communities. And on a personal note, I just wanna say that I'm very happy to see that everyone's here to be heard, because that is something that's very necessary.
Thank you. Go ahead, come on up.
Muy buenas noches. Mi nombre es Darling Ruiz Moreno, soy del grupo Voces de Canal. Les doy las gracias a usted, Kate Collins, y a todos los consejeros y a todos los presentes. Gracias a todos los vecinos que nos están apoyando. A todos, muchas gracias. Yo quiero hablarles sobre el incremento de las rentas. En esta comunidad del Canal se necesita y urge un control de rentas. Yo soy voluntaria en mi comunidad y usualmente llevo información tocando puertas. Y las personas me comentan que cada seis meses o cada año le suben las rentas. Y la verdad, lo que ganan no es suficiente. Ellos como nos vengan a nosotros como representantes, pues se desahogan platicándonos, pero nosotros no podemos hacer nada. Entonces esta noche estamos aquí para pedirles el apoyo de todos ustedes que nos ayuden, por favor, para que ya nos sigan incrementando las rentas, porque la verdad lo que ganamos no es suficiente y tenemos que vivir con dos familias más para poderla pagar. Entonces yo como vecina del Canal sugiero que comiencen ustedes a trabajar en un control de rentas porque es urgente en nuestra comunidad. Y de verdad que nuestra comunidad se los va a agradecer. Muchas gracias. Buenas noches.
Gracias.
Good evening. My name is Darling and I'm part of, a member of Voices of Canal. I just wanna say thank you, Mayor Kate Collins, for being here and thank you to all the other council members and everyone else being here showing your support. And I'm here to talk to you in regards to the rent increase in Canal. And this is something we daily need, rent control in Canal. I work as a volunteer within my community and I'll often bring information door-to-door to and throughout my community. And what the members that I go to tell me is that every six months or every year, the rent goes up. And what they make just isn't enough. And they don't have anywhere else to go, so they divulge and trust in me to hear them out. There just isn't enough for them and it just isn't enough with what they make. And a lot of times they have to live with two other families in order to be able to afford it. So I come to you as a neighbor of Canal and I ask you that you please consider starting a rent control in the Canal. I think our community urgently needs it. And I think the community would be very grateful for it as well.
Thank you.
Mayor Kate, may I request one moment? I need to toggle our interpreters.
Yes.
Charles, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
We ready? Okay. Thank you, come on, come on down, thank you.
Muy buenas noches a todos. Gracias por darnos este tiempo para poder compartir y a todos los auditorios también que está aquí presente. Mi nombre es Piqui Tenorio y yo soy voluntaria de Voces de Canal. Y yo traigo la problemática que urge mayor supervisión de condiciones de vivienda en el área de Canal. Y el problema es porque pienso que está descuidado y hace falta personal en las inspecciones de todos los edificios. Necesitamos ya mayor supervisiones en los edificios y necesitan reparaciones porque son deplorables. ¿Cómo nos pudieran ayudar ustedes? A contratar mayor personal, capacitarlos y tener mayor constancia en la supervisión y de reducirlo de cinco años a por lo menos dos años para supervisión. Por eso necesitamos estas protecciones para que los inquilinos, para que cuando hagan las mejoras que muchas familias necesiten, no los desalojen. Eso es todo, gracias.
Thank you.
Good evening to all. Thank you for giving us this time to share. I am one of the volunteers with the Voices of Canal and I wanted to urge better maintenance for living in Canal, buildings in here. There is deplorable building maintenance and they're not being well-kept. We need repairs because of their deplorable condition. And how can you help us? By hiring more personnel, training them and supervising them, reducing supervision requirements from five years to two years as we need these protections. And also when you make the improvements that are needed, that people are not evicted. Thank you.
Thank you, gracias.
Hi, Jaco, head.
Muy buenas noches, mi nombre es Verónica Duarte. Gracias por la oportunidad de escucharnos. Vengo a hablarles sobre el control de renta. Aún estoy trabajando para pagar renta atrasada que el COVID nos dejó. Aún no se ha ido el COVID y todavía estamos pagando la renta atrasada. ¿Por qué pido un control de renta? Porque si ustedes no nos ayudan con un control de renta, el estrés se va a hacer más grande. En las clínicas de la comunidad no hay terapeutas disponibles por todo el estrés que el COVID ha dejado y necesitamos un control de renta. Lo necesitamos ya, porque si ustedes se pueden dar cuenta, hay muchas familias que aún están pagando renta, renta atrasada. Y si no hay un control de renta ahorita, va a ser un caos, va a ser un caos de estrés de familia. Esto no va a superar. ¿Cómo pueden ustedes ayudarnos? Ustedes pueden cambiar la historia. Ustedes pueden darle un giro a todo esto y nos pueden ayudar. Con un control de renta, ustedes pueden marcar una historia en nosotros y en nuestros hijos. Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Good evening to all. I am Veronica Duarte. Thank you for this chance to listen to us, for us to speak. I am going to speak about rent control. Some of us are still working to pay the back rent left behind by COVID. Even though COVID is still not gone, we are still trying to pay the back rent. So why rent control? If you do not help us, the stress from this will go up. In the clinics of the community, there are no therapists available to help us with the stress that COVID gave us. So we need rent control and we need it now. As you can see, families are still paying this back rent. And if there's no rent control right now, it will cause much stress and issues with the families that we will not be able to overcome. So how can you help? You can change the story. You can turn it around with rent control and you can make history in us and our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Buenas noches a todos y muchas gracias por esta oportunidad de dejarnos aquí expresar nuestros, pues, problemas de renta. Este es el tema y pues yo vengo representando a mi comunidad del barrio del Canal. Soy parte del grupo de Voces del Canal y esa es mi misión, venir a representar a mi comunidad que no puede hacer esto que estamos haciendo nosotros. Mi nombre es Blanca Salinas y yo quiero hablarles sobre que nos apoyen con un congelamiento de rentas o una tarifa de rentas donde yo miro que, al menos en mi situación, en mi caso, me están aumentando el diez por ciento de la renta que estoy pagando y precisamente el mes pasado recibí la notificación y yo pienso, ¿a dónde quieren llegar con el diez por ciento? Esta vez fueron casi doscientos dólares de aumento y digo, otros dos años más van a ser otros cuatrocientos, otros a cuatrocientos, van a ser seiscientos y entonces, ¿qué vamos a hacer si nos están aumentando tanto? Quisiera que nos pudieran apoyar a aminorar ese porcentaje. Creo que si fuera tal vez el cinco por ciento, como creo que anteriormente yo, eso es lo que yo creía que era, pero no estoy tan segura, pero que fuera menos aunque nos aumenten, está bien, pero creo que ahora están exagerando mucho en este aumento con respecto a los salarios que uno tiene, que es muy poco y si a veces tenemos o no tenemos, dos maneras tenemos que tener ese estimado de dinero para renta y como dijo la compañera, vienen otras problemas a causa de esto y pues espero que nos puedan ayudar con su apoyo. Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
Good evening to all and thank you for this opportunity to express our complaints regarding rent, which is the topic today. I came to represent my community of Canal, of which I'm a part of the Voices of Canal, so I'm here to represent my community, doing that what they cannot do at this time. I am Blanca Salinas and I want to speak to you and ask for you to support us with I am Blanca Salinas and I want to speak to you and ask for you to support us with either maybe freezing, a rent freeze or rent control. And at least in my case, they're raising 10% of my rent. Last month I received the letter where it goes up around $200 and next year it'll be another 200, make 400 and then 600. And if it continues to go up, it's difficult. So please, maybe reduce that percentage, maybe down to 5% as I think it was previously, but I'm not sure. Just a smaller percentage that they can raise it up maybe, because right now I think it's a bit exaggerated compared to the salaries that we make. And regardless of if we have it or don't have it, we still have to pay rent. And so as my colleague said as well, it can also cause other problems. So we do hope that we can count on your help. Thank you.
Gracias.
Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es María Salinas. Soy voluntaria de Voces de Canal. El aumento de renta nos está afectando a toda nuestra comunidad demasiado. Queremos seguir viviendo aquí en nuestra área de San Rafael, pero tristemente el sueldo que ganamos, la mayor parte se va en la renta. Por eso estamos aquí para abogar y ustedes vean una manera mejor de ayudar a que no más aumento de renta y a que nuestra voz sea escuchada. Muchas gracias por su valiosa atención.
Gracias.
Good evening to all. I am María Salinas. I'm a volunteer for Voices of Canal. And this raising, this rent hike is affecting all of our entire community too much. We want to live in this area of San Rafael, but sadly, most of our salaries go straight to rent. So we're here to ask for your help. No more rents hikes, please, and our voices are being heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas noches a todos. Alcaldesa Kate, tú tienes el poder para implementar cambios y transformar las vidas de todas las familias que viven en Canal. Tenemos puesto los ojos en ti para que hagas un cambio. Good evening to everybody. Mayor Kate, you have the power to implement change, revolverse and lives in the families of the Canal. We have our eyes on you. You make the change with our community because you can help us, you can do it, everybody. This situation is hard for all the families in Canal. First, the rent is too high. Second, the buildings, they need to renew many things for the families, many kids, they are sick. They hide the rent, but they don't fix anything. Please, you are here to help Canal. Canal need your help. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're good. I think she translated her own. So come on down. Welcome.
Good evening.
Do you want to pull? Yeah. There you go.
I apologize. I'm not as prepared as I'd like to be. I just found out about a meeting like an hour ago. I'm representing the homeless community right now, the recently displaced persons. Myself, through no fault of my own, I went from being able to afford my home to losing it and there's a lot of injustice going around where people believe that services are being provided for these people who are being displaced and they're not actually there. And I've done a lot of research just to find basic essentials, you know, just to get through. And there's no shelter, there's no money, there's no aid, and I'm just hoping that maybe special permissions or agreements could be made that we could help with the people who are already displaced. You know, there's a lot of help for people who are losing their homes, but people who have already lost them are kind of stigmatized and everybody's putting homeless in front of disabled or homeless in front of sick or whatever the problem is. And I've met, just in the last two weeks that I've been in this position, a lot of people who aren't even as able-bodied or minded as I am out there are not getting the services that they need. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome, come on.
Buenas noches a todos aquí presentes. Mi nombre soy La Ríos. Soy miembro del grupo Voces del Canal. Mi abogacía el día de hoy es control de renta. Necesitamos un control de renta en nuestra comunidad, en el área de Canal. No queremos que nos estén subiendo a la renta y no más desalojos, porque queremos que nuestros hijos sigan estudiando en el Distrito de San Rafael. Un control de renta para que podamos seguir viviendo en Marín. Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
Good evening to all that are present. I am one of the members of the Voices of Canal. I wanted, today I'm speaking about rent control, that we need rent control in Canal and we want, we don't want them to raise rent and we want to avoid evictions. We want our kids to be able to study in the school district of San Rafael. We want to live in Marin. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. We're ready for your comments.
Mi nombre es Cruz Vargas y soy voluntaria de Voces del Canal. Y vivo en la comunidad de Canal desde hace 25 años. Muy buenas noches a todos y gracias por darnos este tiempo. Estoy aquí para abogar, para no más desplazamientos. Queremos un control de renta. No vendan los edificios a inversionistas de otros lugares que no se interesen por la comunidad. Más derechos a los inquilinos del área de Canal. No más injusticias a nuestra comunidad. Protección para inquilinos, para cuando hagan mejoras, no los desalojen. Por favor, les pedimos, escuchen nuestras voces porque nos urge un control de renta. Gracias.
Thank you.
My name is Cruz Vargas. I am a volunteer, Voices of Canal. I have lived in Canal for 25 years. So good evening to all. Thank you for giving us this time. I'm here to support no more evictions. We want rent control. We don't want you to sell the buildings to investors from other places who don't care about the community and we want to avoid injustice to our community. We want you to protect renters and please don't evict anymore. Listen to our voices. We need rent control. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Come on down. We're ready for you.
Buenas noches Mayor Kate y concejales. Mi nombre es Rosaura Ríos. Soy miembro de Voces del Canal, residente de Canal. Mi abogacía es por control de renta. Debido a los altos aumentos de renta, vecinos y amistades se están mudando de Marín. Mis sobrinos están yendo al Distrito Escolar de San Rafael y quiero que sigan yendo al Distrito de San Rafael. Pero los altos costos de renta y aumentos de renta nos obligan a mudarnos de Marín. Propongo que, por favor, tomen en cuenta nuestras emergencias en serio y actúen lo más pronto posible para oficialmente establecer un control de renta en San Rafael. Muchas gracias por tomar en cuenta mi petición.
Gracias.
Good evening Mayor Kate and Council. I'm a member of the Voices of Canal and I support rent control. Due to the high raising of rent, neighbors and friends have been moving away from Marin. They're moving away from San Rafael and I want them to stay and continue studying in San Rafael, but these really high rent hikes force us to move from Marin. I propose that you take into account this emergency and help us and establish rent control in San Rafael. Thank you for time. Thank you for taking my petition into account.
Thank you.
Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Aurelia Vargas. Soy voluntaria del grupo Voces de Canal y vivo en el área del Canal por muchos años. Estoy aquí frente a ustedes, como toda esta comunidad, atrás de mí, para pedir un control de rentas aquí en San Rafael. Las injusticias que vivimos en nuestra comunidad son por falta de dichas acciones que nos ponen a todos en un peligro constante de desplazamiento. Yo quiero seguir viviendo aquí en San Rafael, trabajando y seguir apoyando a toda mi comunidad, como lo he estado haciendo, tocando puerta en puerta, brindándoles apoyo. Les pido a todos ustedes como nuestros representantes que, por favor, apoyen nuestra petición: control de renta, protección de inquilinos. Estamos en un país de oportunidades. Denos la oportunidad de tener una vivienda justa que podamos pagar con nuestro salario. Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
Sorry. Yes, good evening to all. My name is Aurelia Vargas, a volunteer in Voices of Canal and I have lived in the Canal area for many years. I am here in front of you as well as the community behind me to ask for rent control in San Rafael. The injustices that we have lived in our community are for a lack of actions previously stated and puts us at risk of constant displacement. We want to live in San Rafael and I want to continue supporting my community as I have, going door to door to door and giving my support. So we're asking you as our representatives to please support this petition for rent control and protection of renters. This is the land of opportunity and we hope that you're able to give us this opportunity to continue living here.
Thank you. Yep, welcome. Yep, go ahead.
Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Sara Benítez y tengo 23 o casi 24 años viviendo aquí en San Rafael, en el área de Canal. Soy residente de esa área y estoy aquí porque por todo lo que mis compañeros o mi comunidad dijo sobre el control de renta y me dirijo especialmente a usted Kate Collins, porque usted nos representa a una comunidad donde todos somos de diferentes razas, colores y religiones. Entonces usted puede hacer un cambio con el control de renta en esta área, porque es un problema serio. Yo tengo dos hijos y tengo un hijo con necesidades especiales. Usted se imagina si yo me llevo a ir a vivir a otro condado, que me ha sido difícil encontrar el apoyo para mi hijo y creo que en otro condado es muy difícil porque ya he estado averiguando por el aumento de renta. A mí no me ha llegado carta de desalojo, pero sí me han incrementado la renta. Entonces yo pido que abogen, que en su próxima agenda pongan el control de renta porque nos urge. A mí me encanta Marín y amo esta ciudad, este condado, porque es uno de los mejores condados del Estado de California y necesitamos ese control de renta, porque nuestros hijos estudian aquí y se van a estudiar a veces fuera del Estado de California y regresan para trabajar en nuestra comunidad. Entonces creo que hacemos, somos recíprocos con nuestros hijos. Ellos vuelven y trabajan y yo sueño que algún día un latino llegue a la presidencia de Estados Unidos y creo que todos estamos aquí porque es un país de oportunidades y creo que nos merecemos esa oportunidad todos. Y quiero que esta noche se vayan a dormir y lleven esa palabra que es empatía, porque empatía yo la he visto en los muros de las escuelas. Entonces, por favor, les pido eso. Muchas gracias a todos ustedes por escucharnos.
Gracias. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sara Benítez. I have been living in San Rafael, the Canal area, for about 24 years. I'm a resident of that area and I'm here because of what my community has said about rent control. We especially direct ourselves to you, Mayor Kate, because you have said before that we are a community of different races, colors and religions and you can be a source of change as well in this area. I have kids and one of my children has special needs and if I go to another county, it would be very difficult to find the help that I need for my child at that other county and I have been looking at, I have been checking the rent hikes and I haven't received the letter myself, but my rent was raised. So I asked that on the next agenda, you place the item for rent control. I love Marin and the city and this county. It is one of the best in the entire state of California. We need rent control as our kids study here and sometimes they go out of state to study, continue education outside of California, and then they still come back here to work. We are reciprocal with our kids. They go and then they come back to work with us here and I hope that Latino one day becomes president. I think that we are all here because this is the country of opportunities and we all deserve those opportunities. So please keep in your thoughts empathy when you go to sleep tonight, as we have seen it on many school murals as well. Thank you for listening.
Gracias.
Muy buenas noches. Mi nombre es Irene De León y agradezco a Mayor Kate por darnos la oportunidad de escucharnos y a los concejales, a todos los que nos están acompañando, para presentarnos los problemas que tenemos en nuestra comunidad. Yo quiero hablar de los desalojos. No queremos más desalojos. Personalmente, mi familia ha sido afectada por falta de derechos a los inquilinos. Sufrí un desalojo el año pasado y todavía no he podido estabilizarme. Tengo hijos estudiando en las escuelas de San Rafael y ellos no quieren moverse de acá. Ellos tienen amigos y aparte ellos ya conocen el sistema de las escuelas y ir a otras escuelas les asusta y ellos no quieren irse a otro lugar. Yo trabajo a tiempo completo y aún así mi salario no es suficiente para pagar los altos alquileres de la renta, ya que nos exigen que tenemos que ganar aproximadamente dos veces de lo que se paga una renta, un apartamento, y eso es demasiado para mí y para muchas familias que están igual que ellos. Los trabajos no nos dan la capacidad de pagar las rentas. Por favor, trabajen en alguna ordenanza, que modifique la cantidad de personas sugeridas en los apartamentos. Esto nos daría la oportunidad de tener nuestro propio apartamento y así poder tener estabilidad para nuestras familias. Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Irene De León. I appreciate you, Mayor Kate, for giving us the opportunity to hear us as well as the council members and I am with those here that are present to present the problems that we have in our community. I want to speak about evictions that we don't want anymore. My family was affected due to a lack of renters' rights last year and we have not been able to stabilize since then. I have kids that are studying here and the thought of them going to other places scares them. They already know the school system here and they don't want to go to a different one. I am a full-time worker and my salary is not enough to pay the high rents that we have to. They ask for two times what the rent is and it is just too much for me and for many families like me. The work does not give us the ability to pay the rent well. So please work on an ordinance that would help people affected by displacement and that way, in the amount of people that an apartment is allowed to have, so that way we could have our own place for our own family.
Thank you.
Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Luis Martínez. Llegué aquí en el 1999. Soy voluntario en Voces de Canal, ayuda a otras agencias y también voluntario en las escuelas de mis hijos. Y en días pasados me quise mover porque el lugar donde vivo es pequeño. Cuando quise buscar una vivienda, casas o apartamentos de tres recámaras cuestan 3,800 dólares. Los requisitos son que gane tres veces más de lo que vale una renta, o sea, que tendría yo que ganar 11,400 dólares al mes y me piden dos meses de depósito para poder crear una vivienda. Me piden seguro social válido, me piden más de 700 puntos de crédito para poder crear una vivienda en cinco lugares con que yo llamé y que me dicen, oh, can I call you back? Nunca llaman para atrás. Después me mandan un correo electrónico donde me dicen que la vivienda en la que yo estaba interesado ya no está disponible y yo checo días después y la vivienda todavía sigue disponible. Entonces a lo que pienso que es discriminación en nuestro condado de Marín y como dicen muchos de nuestros compañeros, nosotros queremos este lugar, amamos este lugar. Años que amamos este lugar, sabemos ya más o menos cómo estamos en este lugar y queremos que nuestros hijos sigan estudiando en este lugar. Es por eso que estamos aquí. y queremos que nuestros hijos sigan estudiando en este lugar. Es por eso que estamos aquí. Todos nosotros venimos en representación de toda nuestra comunidad de San Rafael. Hablamos por todos ellos, los que no están aquí presentes. Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
Good evening to all. My name is Luis Martínez. I arrived in 1999. I'm a volunteer with Voices of Canal and I help with other agencies as well as my kids' schools. These last months, I've been considering trying to move to another place because where I live is too small and I've been looking for three-bedroom locations and they are charging around 3,800 a month. And you have to earn, according to them, three times that rent, so you'd have to earn around 11,400 a month. And they ask for two months of deposit and a valid social security and have more than 700 credit score for the five places that I called. And they say, when you call them, they say, can I call you back? And then they never do. Then they send an email shortly after and the saying that the property that I was interested in is no longer available. However, I will check a few days later. It's still available. I think it's discrimination in Marin County and even so, we love this place. And we've been here for years. We want our kids to study in this place and that's why we're here. We come in representation of San Rafael and our community and for those not present.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Isa Ferris. I'm an undergraduate student at Dominican University and a longtime resident of San Anselmo. I am here today in solidarity with Canal residents to advocate and urge you to support this community and their efforts for rent control and tenant protections. Despite not being directly affected by this issue, I have many close friends who reside in rented units in the Canal. They are too fearful to bring up the structural issues that plague their apartment out of fear that they could get an eviction notice or their rent dues increased. Others have been forced to relocate to Richmond after nearly a lifetime spent in the Canal because they had no renters' protections and were priced out. I implore you to listen to Canal residents and take immediate action to see as though this community gets the support and protection they need for housing. It's in your best interest to be on the right side of history. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I think we're good. He did a simultaneous. Yep, yep, yep. Thank you, though.
Good evening, members of the city. Thank you. Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Gina Gilmet and I'm with Community Action Marin and we are here in solidarity with the renters who have spoken already. Community Action Marin is the largest nonprofit human services provider in Marin County. We serve over 5,000 households each year with a focus on addressing the causes and consequences of poverty. Of no surprise to anyone in this room, I would guess. Housing is the greatest need that we hear across all of the programs and services that we provide. We see and the data shows that people of color and people of low income are experiencing the greatest hardships and the greatest disparities. Housing is definitely a racial and economic justice issue here in Marin County. Since mid-November of 2022, our agency has dispersed more than 1.8 million dollars to 268 renter households via the county's Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Of those that we have served, 43% of the funds have gone to Latino households, 27% white, 10% black and African-American is the largest group served. Over 80% of those who have received assistance are among the lowest income in our county and 42% of those served are people from San Rafael. ERAP and other rental assistance programs have had a tremendous positive impact, but they are time-limited and non-sustainable sources of support. However, several effective policies that the city has enacted during COVID in the form of eviction moratorium, temporary rent freezes and also just cause eviction protections have helped prevent many San Rafael residents from being displaced, evicted or experiencing homelessness. And very unfortunately, many of these policies, all of those policies, are no longer in place. So the city's stated commitment to racial and economic justice needs to be followed with ongoing actions to ensure that that is happening in practice. The services, as a service provider, the services that can be provided are helpful, but they are not a solution. They are not justice. And so without policy action, we will see further displacement as we've heard about today. And people of color and low income in our community are being forced to leave Marin County and leave the city of San Rafael. And this has negative impacts across the board on our social fabric as well as our economy. One of the agenda items on your agenda for later in the meeting is talking about homelessness and how to address that. And perhaps the single most important thing that you could do in terms of policy change to prevent homelessness is to enact tenant protections. So the city council is in a unique position to enact these policies for San Rafael. And we urge you as a service provider and in solidarity with residents to enact emergency immediate tenant protections, excuse me, for San Rafael to ensure that our community continues to hold strong together. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, I'm JD. I'm a law student at University of San Francisco School of Law and I've been doing pro bono work with Legal Aid Marin since October, working specifically on rent control ordinances and the liability that municipalities face when they enact these statutes and large-scale landlords sue them. After writing that memo and working with Ms. Hollingsworth over at Legal Aid Marin, I'm working now on a paper about the health and fiscal impacts on both individuals and municipalities of homelessness and precarious housing. And one of the things that is clear from the data, from everything else, is that it is far more expensive for a city to treat or save a homeless person from homelessness than it is to prevent them from ever getting there in the first place. Rent control is just one part of this whole place. I'm in my second career. I started in mental health. And one of the things you see with precarious housing and with homelessness is an increased incidence of all mental health disorders, whether it be things going all the way through domestic violence, to PTSD, to trauma, to substance abuse. These things increase exponentially the less stable the housing is of the individuals. Also, any incident of homelessness, even if that is seven days or 14 days because someone gets evicted, we heard just cause protections mentioned to keep people from being evicted, increases the likelihood three to seven times of a person experiencing another incident of homelessness. Every single time someone experiences any length of homeless time, it increases that likelihood even further. So please, when you have the ability to, when you can, enact some form of rent control, some form of tenant protections that are stronger than the state ones, because the state's protection, which is the, I forget the exact word, but it's basically the amount of inflation is the max you can raise rent. If wages were going up at the amount of inflation, that would be okay, but they're not. And for the lowest-income earners who are most at risk of becoming homeless, becoming terminally homeless, becoming perpetually homeless and suffering from all of these things, they need protection that is greater than that 10%. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Pull that out. There you go. There you go.
Good evening, Mayor Kate and council members. I'm Aaron Burnett, Director of Policy and Civic Engagement at Canal Alliance. And you've already heard a lot of the voices of the community, so I'll be very brief. I want to start by saying I commend the community members for taking the courage to come up here and stand before you and give public comment. Seems like might not be a lot to most, but it is quite a courageous act. So I want to first and foremost state that I really admire that. As far as policies go, you heard a lot about rent control tonight. I want to just say that is a valid tool to prevent displacement, but I want to also acknowledge that a lot of community members here tonight that did not speak are residents of 400 Canal in the Opportunity Zone in the Canal District and some of whom are already starting to receive their 60-day notices regardless of whether or not they paid rent or not. So when it comes to anti-displacement measures, it's important to take a holistic approach, considering rent control, yes, but also other anti-displacement measures that are going to prevent the type of displacement that we're seeing currently in the Opportunity Zone in the Canal. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Welcome. Maybe pull that, yeah, pull it towards you. Yeah, there you go.
Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Glendy. Soy una de las líderes del 400 Canal. Estamos acá abogando porque haya un control de renta, también por el desalojo. Sabemos que en nuestra comunidad han estado habiendo muchos desalojos. Queremos que nos ayuden, nos apoyen. Tenemos hijos estudiando en las escuelas de San Rafael. Queremos que nuestros hijos sigan estudiando en las escuelas de San Rafael. Muchas gracias por prestar mi atención. Gracias.
Good evening to all. My name is Glendy. I'm one of the leaders of 400 Canal. We are here supporting rent control and also protections from evictions in our community. There have already been many evictions and so we're asking you to help us, our kids study here in San Rafael and we want them to continue studying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Muy buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Rosa Guevara. Soy líder de la Unión de Inquilinos de los 400. Tengo 20 años viviendo en los 400. Tengo un hijo que asiste a la escuela de Davidson. Últimamente, muchas familias en nuestra comunidad están pasando por desalojos. Estamos preocupados al no saber qué va a pasar con las familias que todavía seguimos viviendo ahí en los 400. Hay mucho estrés y demasiada preocupación en nuestra familia. Queremos que nuestros hijos sigan asistiendo a las escuelas de San Rafael y también queremos quedarnos en nuestro departamento. Los precios de la renta en Marin están demasiado altos. Exigimos que paren con los desalojos y necesitamos control de renta urgente. Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
Good evening to all. My name is Rosa Guevara. I'm a part of the Union of Renters of 400. I've been living in 400 for 20 years. I have one child who attends school, Davidson School. Lately, many families in our community have faced eviction and we don't know what to do about it. There has been a lot of stress and my family has been very worried. We want our kids to keep attending schools in San Rafael and to keep our apartment, but the rent in Marin is too high. Please stop evictions and we need an urgent rent control. Thank you.
Thank you. Ready for you.
Muchas gracias.
Yeah, welcome.
Muy buenas noches, Alcaldeza Kate, todos los concejales y todos los aquí presentes. Mi nombre es Marina Palma y yo soy voluntaria con Voces de Canal. Estoy aquí abogando por una vivienda justa y para comenzar un control de renta que es tan necesario en nuestra comunidad y actualmente en todo Marin. No sé qué trauma es peor, el de COVID o el no tener a dónde vivir. De acuerdo a nuestro, a dónde vivir, de acuerdo a nuestros ingresos. Esta es una emergencia. Nos están desplazando de Marin y las familias de bajo recursos. Llegó la hora de luchar. Pido, les imploro a todos ustedes que por favor tomen nuestras necesidades e inquietudes en serio. Queremos seguir viviendo en Marin. Queremos que nuestros niños vayan aquí a Marin. Queremos que por favor nos protejan. Nosotros somos una cultura que protegemos cuando podemos y cuando cualquiera de ustedes necesita algo de nosotros, nosotros estamos para ustedes. Creo que ha llegado el momento de que luchemos juntos y que ustedes sepan que estamos aquí para colaborar. Yo deseo de corazón que pongan en su agenda esta gran necesidad que tenemos y que comience el trabajo de ese control de renta para demostrarle que todos estamos unidos. Les pido a todos que se levanten si creen en lo que estamos pidiendo, por favor. Estamos en solidaridad. Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
Good evening, Mayor Kate and council members and all those that are present. My name is Marina Palma. I'm a volunteer at Voices of Canal and I am here to support fair living. And we do need rent control. It is necessary in our community and all of Marin. I'm not sure which trauma is worse, COVID or having no place to live, you know, a place to live according to our income. And it's an emergency. They are evicting us from Marin affecting low-income families and I ask and I implore all of you to take our worries seriously. We want to live here. We want our kids to go to school here and we need you to protect us. We are a people who protect when we can and we need you to help us this time. And we want to also collaborate with you and fight together. So please place this on the agenda. There is a great need for rent control. And in order for us all to show that we are unified, I ask everyone to stand in solidarity.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers that would like, yep, come down before we go to the online open time?
Albatery Gersel Park. Strangely, I had a similar question about rent control in San Rafael. And more to the point, I was trying to understand the purpose of the mediation request form that exists on the website that suggests that if a landlord would request a rent increase in greater of 5%, then automatically you could fill out a form within 10 days of the receipt of that increase probably to the city to say, there's a web address here, I can't see it, make a request that they don't increase the rent more than that 5%. So I don't know if that is still in effect or if the website is out of date and this needs to come down. So that's all I have.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else in the chambers for public open time? Not seeing anyone. We'll see virtually if there's anyone that has their hands raised.
As a reminder to comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. And to comment by phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. And once you've heard the notification, the host is inviting you to speak. You'll need to press star six to unmute yourself and each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comment and will be muted once time has elapsed. And as a reminder, we please ask that you speak slowly to allow our interpreters to effectively interpret your comments. I do see a couple of hands raised.
Hello, everyone, and good evening. My name is Stephanie Barahona and I'm here as a Human Rights Commissioner representing the Canal community. I speak to you in solidarity with the Voces del Canal volunteers. I have lived through these experiences myself and understand how difficult it can be to not only not have a shelter to live in, but to not have security, especially when you have a child to take care of. I beg you to please take action. You have the power to speak to higher authorities who can implement change and collaborate with you. Find solutions for these families rather than letting them be displaced. You have people here tonight with great ideas. Listen and make the right decision, even if it is a difficult one. As you are all aware, the county of Marin has one of the worst reputations when it comes to supporting the underprivileged populations and people of color. You have the opportunity to make a difference. Please do not let these voices go unheard.
Hi, good night, everyone. My name is Rosa Vazquez. I'm a volunteer at Voces del Canal and I hereby ask you to please put yourself on our shoe and please support our community because we are here and we are all suffering the burden as a community. So please, I ask you guys, since you guys are up there to make decisions, to please make this a priority and please do hear our petition. Thank you. Okay, bye.
Yes, this is John Reynolds. I live in the Canal. I'm in a condo. I have more privilege. But I'm reaching out and I'm concerned about people that have less privilege, low-income people, people of color. The Community Action Marin, who represents a lot of people and is very supportive of people with low income and people of color and particularly people in the 400 Canal. There needs to be improvement, maintenance in 400 Canal, but there doesn't need to be increased rent that means eviction or having to leave their apartments there. We really support in solidarity with people that are the Voces of Canal as well as Community Action Marin, as well as the lawyer from San Francisco who spoke earlier. Let us do what we can do and put it on the agenda and consider mandatory mediation if that's still viable relative to the landlord for 400 Canal and other places in the Canal. So thank you.
Can you hear me?
We sure can. Go ahead.
Okay, hi. My name is Jason Sarris. I'm just calling in support of the Canal community for their bid for rent control. We don't need to, you know, take it from me, who's been on the streets for 12 years and recently just got housed, but we don't need to see anybody else on the streets getting priced out because of skyrocketing rents. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I see no other hands raised. I'll give everyone a couple of seconds. I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public comment. And I echo what was said earlier. It's not easy to come into a room and stand up and talk about what's really important to you. So thank you for coming down and talking with us today. As I said at the beginning of the meeting, we cannot comment directly on anything that was shared with us today. But I will briefly turn to the city manager as we do have some housing-related conversations coming up. So if you would.
Sure, Mayor. We do have a few scheduled city council agenda items that are going to be around the topic of housing coming up the next several meetings. And not all of them relate directly to the subjects that we heard about during open time. But I just thought I'd, I'd mention some of them that are coming up. It's, I mentioned at the last city council meeting that at your next council meeting on March 20th, there'll be the annual progress report for the general plan 2040 and for the housing element. So that's, it's not the housing element that we're seeking approval from, from housing community development at the state level right now. It's the, the prior housing element that we're doing an annual report out on that we do every year. So it's more things like what's getting, what are the housing units that the council's approved? Are they getting built or not? And are we meeting our regional housing needs assessment requirements and that sort of thing? But we will be talking about both, all the projects of the general plan and implementation of the general plan and the housing element at the, at that next council meeting. And then I think the housing element that more people are, are concerned about or watching is the, the new housing element, the one that's going to go from this year, 2023 to 2031. It's an eight-year period, and that's currently under review, as I mentioned, by the state. They have 90 days to review our draft, which we submitted around December 20th. So it's, it's actually quite short now before that 90-day period is over. So that's just going to happen in the next couple of weeks. And then our intent is to get it back in front of the city council as soon as we can after that. And that will just be dictated by how many comments we receive on that plan, whether the state's asking us to do more outreach or what sorts of things the state's asking for. So that could happen as soon as April. We're targeting kind of April, May for, for bringing that new housing element forward. And that housing element does have a number of different topics that were brought up tonight, such as tenant protection measures, funding for affordable housing, preservation of at-risk housing units, and there's lots and lots of different programs around housing that are in that, in that document. So staff is anxious to bring that back to you, get that approved, so that we can start working on the, those programs and the actions and the implementation of that housing element. We also have a couple goals and objectives, meetings, workshops that are coming up. The city council around this time of year, over the next couple of months, sets the goals and objectives and priorities for the coming two-year period. And we're looking at the date of May 8th for a city council study session. Hasn't been advertised yet because we, I think we just landed on that date just recently. And the one that we have had on the calendar is May 15th for another council opportunity, again, before they're finalized, to kind of see the draft goals and objectives for the next couple of years and get comments from the community and comments from the, from the city council. So why that's important is, well, the, the housing element that I mentioned is an eight-year plan. And as, as a planning document, the goals and objectives take place over two years. So it's, it's much more, it's a shorter-term action items that the council is directing staff to go do during that period. And often what we see in the goals and objectives that the council approves are things that came out of the housing element or the general plan or a different planning document or something like that. And just a clarification that says, you know, within this period of time, this is when this is going to take place or with the council's directing staff to do the work. So those are a few items that are coming up over the next few months, starting with the next meeting. And then until we approve the budget and if council approves the budget in June.
Thank you. Thank you for offering that to the community. So we'll move on to the rest of our agenda, and you're welcome to stay, but it's fine if you want to sneak out. And again, thank his, thanks to Voces de Canal for coming and everyone else that made the effort. We'll give you a moment if you are planning on leaving before we get to our next agenda item.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Bye-bye. All right, we'll just get it, we'll get a moment and then we'll turn it over to the city manager for the, his report. Okay, City Manager Schutz, you're ready? We'll start with you before we go to the council members.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Kate and Council. I have two announcements. I'm going to do the first one and ask Assistant City Manager Christine Lulovich to do the second one. The first one is that for many, many city manager reports, particularly in the first couple of years of the pandemic, I was giving very detailed pandemic updates. And for many reasons, it feels like a, a big deal to have the termination of the local emergency declaration on your consent calendar tonight. And I just wanted to offer a couple reflections on that. First, in the summer of 2021, that's when I decided that I had a couple of years remaining as the city manager in San Rafael. And one of the reasons is because I wanted to see the Emergency Operations Center kind of portion of the pandemic through to the end. And I thought it might take that long in order to get through all of that period of time. And it has. The city council is going to be naming a new city manager in the next couple of months. That information will be known. So the end of the declared emergency period is personally meaningful to me because it's been something that I've been looking for, for a long time. There's two things I wanted to share. The first one is just immense gratitude for the city staff that, that worked in the Emergency Operations Center. Part of the responsibilities of this pandemic, particularly our first responders, who was a very scary period of many months in the beginning before much was known about what was going on, where the first responders were out in the field taking care of people as always. So I'll, I'll never forget that. And also the non-first responder staff and how quickly people were putting together everything virtual, online, emergency childcare, taking care of, of kids that's parents were, were working and needed to, and needed to be essential workers. And virtual public counters, so people can still get permits and that sort of thing. We're setting up access to testing and vaccinations and all of that. And then also, my second thought is that while the Emergency Operations Center kind of aspect or the local declaration of emergency is ending at the state, county, and federal levels imminently, that doesn't mean that, that we're done when it comes to kind of responding to the pandemic. And I think you'll see through a lot of documents, one of which I just mentioned, the housing element, but other documents that are going to be coming forward to the council, such as the Economic Development Strategic Plan, the specific plans that we are, that we're going to be doing for neighborhoods of the priority development areas like the Canal area and Northgate, and so many other city council goals and objectives, and so many other things that are kind of still related to the years following, you know, the official end of the emergency portion of the pandemic, where we'll still be responding on so many things going forward. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, but also acknowledge that the, the work is not nearly done in terms of overall response, but also it's a milestone of all of these different jurisdictions, kind of calling an end to what I'm referring to as like the Emergency Operations Center, like portion of the response to the emergency. So I just wanted to highlight that. It was a, a lot over the past few years, particularly city employees were using, doing their disaster service worker role at the same time that they were trying to do their regular city jobs as well. And then for the second city manager report announcement, I'm going to turn it over to Christine to provide just a quick update on the meeting that's happening on Wednesday evening this week on the policing in San Rafael.
Thank you, Jim.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we do have the next in our series of policing in our community meetings on Wednesday evening. It's both virtual and in person at the Alborro Center. It will be held in Spanish with English interpretation. So it's from six to eight. We've got childcare, food, refreshments, drinks. We do have Councilmember Yurans Galati and Chief Spiller will be speaking to the community, sharing back what we heard the last series of meetings this past fall, talking about what we've done with that feedback so far, and then talking about what's to come and getting some feedback about police accountability and where we go from here. So I hope everybody can make it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. That concludes the city manager's report.
Thank you so much. I'll turn to my colleagues. I'll start with the Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Kate. Attended the Marin County Council of Mayors and Councilmembers, MCCMC, and I know Mayor Kate was there and also Councilmember Kurtz. I don't know if there were any other council members. It's hard to see with all the little boxes. But it was really nice to see our new Assembly Member, Damon Connolly. Great that he's representing us in Sacramento, knowing our city and our schools so well. And he is, he has been very busy with many bills around so many different things. Agriculture, the environment, water insurance, gun safety, tobacco. So I really look forward to continue watching, to see the progress there. I also chaired the MCCMC, Marin County Council of Mayors and Councilmembers, for the Climate Action Team. And we invited Dana Armanino from the county. There was a lot of interest from other cities and towns to learn about where everybody is around food ordinance and also electrifying buildings. So it was a great meeting. And then attended the Marin sanitary service 75th anniversary and 90th birthday for Joe Garvarino. So I know that Mayor Kate and Councilmember Kurtz were there, and I'm sure maybe you have more to say. So I'll stop there with my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two meetings to report. Last Thursday, I attended remotely the Biomarin Rare Disease Day 2023, celebrated and honored the rare disease community. Some of the diseases that were mentioned and are being treated by Biomarin achondrophagia, sorry, achondroplasia, mucopolysaccharidosis, phenylketonuria, and Batten's disease, were some of the diseases mentioned and being addressed. We heard several personal stories of folks with rare diseases and the ways they've been able to thrive with the support of Biomarin. I also attended last week the AdHoc Green Microgrid Policymakers Group, this time with now Assembly Member Damon Connolly. We were joined by Supervisor Mary Sackett, as well as Supervisor Dennis Riddoni. We received a presentation from Alex Shore on microgrid, microgrid use cases, which focused on community energy resilience and also provided considerations for optimal locations. This is for self-contained photovoltaic, photovoltaics plus battery and the opportunities and challenges therein. This is a common theme when we talk about microgrids. So it was good to hear from Alex Shore. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you. I'll just add on a couple of more. Many MWPA meetings, and I'll leave the, the updates to the report that's going to be coming up shortly. But just as you'll hear, we are ramping up right now in the planning for next year. So things have gotten busy. And attended a meeting actually at St. Vincent's School to hear what's happening, what from Marin Catholic Charities and the work that they're doing with the students coming in and help there, which is really exciting. And then I had the opportunity to do a ride-along with our police department, so with Officer Gamble on Friday night. So really appreciate that. It was a great opportunity to see sort of a behind-the-scenes work that's happening. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
Couple of quick updates. I had a regularly scheduled update meeting with Nancy Whelan, the General Manager of Marin Transit. We talked mostly about the incoming comments on the proposed route changes that I described to you the last meeting. I also participated in an interview of a prospective member for the Library Foundation Board.
Thank you, and I'll bring it on home. I'm your representative on the Transportation Authority of Marin. They have received money from MTC, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, to study a, what they're calling bus on shoulder. I think there's a more official name of that, but bus on shoulder from DeLong up in Nevada, southbound only to Lincoln. And it would be during high commute times or when there are a lot of cars on the roadway. It seems straightforward enough. You just put the bus on the shoulder. Actually, because you have the weaving of cars going on and off, and it actually changes the whole dynamics of it, it has to be studied. So the $1.25 billion that it takes to study it has been received by TAM. So we look forward to having some relief once that study has been complete, and hopefully there'll be implementation. In addition, I was honored to speak at the Federation of Neighborhoods virtually. It wasn't in person yet. We had great attendance. We had representation from across San Rafael. There was questions, many questions that were often pertinent to whoever was asking them about their neighborhood. So it was a, nice that I had a chance to connect with them. As Vice Mayor Yurans Gulati said, yes, the Marin sanitary service event was great. And I have to share, we all got to walk around and look at this brand-new machine called a Tiger. I'm sorry, I don't know what Tiger stands for, but I'll tell you what it does. It takes in the paper. So when you're recycling and you try to like have, what is it, hopeful recycling? And maybe you put in paper that's actually not just paper. This machine is able to do a really preliminary, actually a huge sort, and getting out 90, getting 90% of the good paper and 10% of the bad stuff. And the reason that's important is when, if, if the streams aren't as clean, then they have to go to landfill and they can't be recycled. So Marin sanitary, I think, is one of the only agencies that has a Tiger in California. Trying to think. They might be the first, if not the second. So very cool. I know they do tours, so if you want to see some really cool machinery around our waste streams, I highly recommend visiting them and checking it out. And then finally, last week, there was a ribbon cutting for Silverworks, which is a new business up in the Northgate Mall between, next to Peeps and Chipotle, and you can go and do, do-it-yourself silver jewelry with, with stones and things. Luckily, they have people that help you because there is soldering involved, I'll just say. So thank you. As always, appreciate all that you do in the community. In addition to your Monday night, thank you, city managers and Assistant City Manager. I will accept comments now on the, the reports. Anyone in the chambers like to report on either the city manager or council member reports? Now is your time. Not seeing anyone. Is there anyone virtually who would like to comment on the city manager or council member reports?
I see no hands raised, and I'll give everyone a moment. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and bring it to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be held from the consent agenda? Shaking heads, but I can't see, Rachel. Nope. Okay. Are there any comments from the public on the consent calendar? We have three items. So, yep, so, so we're at four A through C. So hold on tight, and I will be sure we'll get there shortly. So not seen any comments on the consent agenda. Are there any comments online?
I see no hands raised, and I'll give everyone a moment. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment, and we're moving right along. We have a special presentation this evening.
We need a roll call.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, sorry. I was so excited because this is Women's History Month. Thank God I have colleagues. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yurans Gulati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries five zero. Thank you all. Now we will get to a special presentation. As is our custom, we receive public comment prior to the reading. And this is a proclamation of the month-long celebration of the Women's History Month. Is there anyone in the chambers who'd like to comment on the proclamation that I shall read soon? Not seen anyone? Anyone online?
I see no hands raised, and I'll give everyone a moment. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will bring it back to read the proclamation. And as I said, it's for the celebration of Women's History Month. Whereas each year, Women's History Month offers an important opportunity for us to shine a light on the extraordinary legacy of trailblazing American women and girls who have built, shaped, and improved upon our nation. And whereas, through leadership, innovation, and ingenuity, generations of women have made significant contributions in science, medicine, technology, business, politics, entrepreneurship, and arts and culture. And whereas, whether serving in elected positions across America, leading groundbreaking civil rights movements, venturing into unknown frontiers, or programming revolutionary technologies, generations of women that knew their gender was no obstacles to what they could accomplish have long stirred new ideas and opened new doors, having a profound and positive impact on our community. And whereas, despite their contributions, the role of women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in literature, education, and culture. So this month, we celebrate countless pioneering women and their victories, and we continue our work to build a society where all children have equal possibilities. Now therefore, the City Council of San Rafael proclaims the month of March 2023 as Women's Histories Month and recognizes in many accomplishments, women have historically achieved and the ongoing contributions they will make. Thank you. We're going to frame this one now. Near and dear to our heart up here on the dais. Okay.
And if I may, Madam Mayor?
Yes, would you?
I cannot let this pass that this is the first time that proclamation has been read by a woman in the 145-year history?
Fifty-one.
Sorry, 150, in 151 years. This is the first time a woman has been mayor and read that proclamation or any other proclamation. So it's especially meaningful this year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you. Get a little verklempt with that. Thank you. Okay. Deep breath. Other agenda items. We have two items. Six A will be the informational report on the wildfire prevention efforts. And then we will get to six B for the gentleman who want to give input on that. So sit tight. We're going to start with MWPA. And I see San Rafael FD coming down. Welcome, Chief White.
Good evening, Mayor Kate, members of the council, City Manager Schutz, Assistant City Manager Lilovich, City Attorney Epstein, City Clerk Lara. All right. Good to be here this evening. My name is Darren White, and I'm the Fire Chief for the City of San Rafael. And I'd just like to make a couple of remarks about the team that's going to provide tonight's informational report on our wildfire mitigation efforts. The three individuals sitting here, Quinn Gardner, our Deputy Director of Emergency Management, right here immediately to my right is our Hazard Mitigation Coordinator Kate Anderson. And to her right is our Defensible Space Program Manager Manny Albano. I got to tell you, they're three of the best in the profession. And I'm not going to provide the report, but I just wanted to provide some opening comments. So please bear with me for just maybe another 30 seconds. I think it was stated earlier by one of the council members, we're entering our fourth year with Measure C funding and the MWPA being in operation. It's amazing how much we've been able to do in a relatively short period of time. But that much time has already passed, but we're in full stride. But we're in full stride primarily due to the efforts of these three individuals and those that they supervise and have been training over the course of the last couple of years. They really are true to their craft. This team has done a marvelous job of identifying, strategizing, and prioritizing the many projects that go along with our vegetation management program. They're very thoughtful in what they do. And as an example, they approach things from an equity lens and ensure that MWPA in general is doing the same thing countywide. They embrace and promote a collaborative style with stakeholders and the public, which makes them a real pleasure to work with. I can tell you so many times that I've passed on complaints and concerns to Manny, Quinn, and Kate, and they've been able to resolve each and every one of those concerns effectively and swiftly. And I also have to say to my frustration at times, they're highly sought after. I've got other agencies openly making moves, trying to recruit each one of them. So, but I have to admit, they also know how to leverage other funding opportunities when necessary. And they bring a certain level of subject matter expertise to our department each and every day and our community each and every day. And it's included when you look at how they're expanding our community outreach and our education efforts as well. And so you're going to hear about a lot of these things this evening. But more importantly, I just want you to be aware that because of their efforts, we're continuously drawing down and progressively drawing down the risk in our community when it comes to wildfires. So with that, I'm going to close and then open it up for the informational report. We'll start with Quinn.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Hi, Quinn.
Hi, everybody. One moment. Got to do the tech is always the...
Yep, it's working.
All right. Wrong one.
Oh, okay.
No, that's right. Okay, we're good. All right. Good evening, Council Mayor. It's a pleasure to be back with you. Chief, I think you stole a lot of my opening comments, which was really just to say that I know I've been the face of this program for the last couple of years, but there are so many amazing people making it happen, two of them here, the teams behind them. Got to brag about the Team of the Quarter Award. Just a lot of really amazing work happening. The photo on the left here on this intro slide was the San Rafael Hillfire last year, which didn't damage property, right? Because the work had already been done, and we continue to do a lot of work in defensible space. And you'll hear more about those efforts as we go through this. But I cannot say enough about the team of individuals and the folks that we have doing this work, not just in the city, but across the MWPA as a whole. So with that, you've seen this a little bit from me, but I think it's really important to, for the reminder for everybody, that this is a 360 approach. There's not one thing we can do to really adapt our community to wildfire. We need to look at policies and plans, which you guys have been instrumental and a part of, as well as how we work with our residents, with our landscape, and thinking through things like evacuation and our partnerships. And you'll see all that reflected, I think, this evening. Largely thanks, of course, to our wildfire action plan, which we started back in 19, adopted in 2020, which has been still and still is instrumental as we develop our action plans every year now that we have the funding, which of course, thanks to the voters, was approved in 2020, which was when the MWPA was established. And then we really started working through those work plans. And we are entering into our fourth, yeah, fourth year, which is incredible when we really think about it. So it's been incredible. And another big piece of that has been having our updated citywide vegetation standards. And Manny will touch on that, and I'll steal a little bit of his thunder. But within one neighborhood that we did a lot of work on, we followed the guidance of council, a lot of education, a lot of resources provided from residents. We went from, we have managed without having to issue a fine to get 99% compliance before we had to start looking and moving into that area that is unfortunate, but we knew was a potential outcome here. But we also need to thank our residents for the incredible work they've been doing and realizing that the work they do on their home impacts their neighbors. So thanks to those standards, we've been able to do a lot of education. The MWPA, right, we're five zones, 17 member agencies, layer after layer after layer of committee, Councilmember Kurtz, of course, the executive, Chief White on operations, myself on the Advisory Technical Committee. We've got our citizens oversight, the finance. At-large, non-voting members like our parks partners, environmental sound practices groups. Really an amazing organization with a lot of layers, but doing incredible work and being able to stay fairly nimble despite all these layers and to really to achieve what we want to be achieving. So we have three different main buckets that we pull from. Core, as a reminder, impacts the entire geographic San Rafael area, not just the city proper. And then our two other buckets impact just San Rafael as a city. I was going to create my own slide about goals, and then I went to the MWPA's website and realized there was a beautiful graphic, and it was also a great opportunity to remind the public that the transparency behind what's happening with their tax dollars is right here on the website. And I really encourage everybody to go to the website and look at it, marinwildfire.org. But here's our main five focus areas: vegetation management, evacuations, grants, outreach and education, and of course, adapting those individual homes through home hardening and defensible space work. A quick map of those projects, our upcoming meetings. Again, the transparency on the website, all the projects are there. Really encourage folks to take a look at that. And with that, I'm going to have Kate dive into some details. Today, we're going to cover what we've done over the past fiscal year, as well as what we're proposing to do coming forward. And I just need to overemphasize when we remember all those layers. None of our proposals for 2324 have gone through those layers yet. So this is very much draft stage, but we wanted to bring it to you first. But first, we'll take a look back and do some updates.
All right. Thank you, Quinn. Mayor Kate, Council, everyone else present. It's a pleasure to be here in front of you tonight. It's the first time I've presented and just want to start explaining some of the work that I'm really passionate about, especially being part of this team. So as Quinn mentioned, we've got five goals that we're trying to reach, and we allocate money towards that. This is a brief overview of how we allocate that funding through our core, our local, and our defensible space budget. And this is everything, including the local and the core, so that whole geographic zone. Really want to focus on the defensible space and home hardening. That number is pretty standard throughout the lifetime of this tax measure. So that's what we'll be expecting to see year after year. That amount of money, about a quarter of our budget, going towards our program for defensible space inspections. Also want to highlight that most of our funding is going towards vegetation management. That's an area that we do have a lot of control over, that we can impact very easily to make a direct impact on mitigating the actual fire risk and fire behavior if a fire comes through these areas. Next, Quinn. So just want to show what this actually looks like on the map. This is our entire San Rafael core zone. That includes the unincorporated areas, our CSAs, also Marinwood, CSD, and the CSA surrounding that area as well. So I just want to highlight, we can see a little bit of detail on this map, but some of the lines, the purple and the yellow, it looks like, those are areas where we've done vegetation management along fire roads and evacuation routes. So pretty strategic in our, in our location of those. Adjoning a lot of those areas are kind of the brown and the yellow polygons that you see there. And that's where we've done our goat grazing, our defensible space fuel reduction. And those really all work together in that spatial arrangement. So just a brief overview of what we've been doing. So getting right into the itemized list of our core projects that we're working on right now. I'm not going to get too much into that. It's provided in the staff report. We can take questions on it later. But I do want to highlight a couple of the projects that we have on hold or that we haven't started, but some that we have completed. Most of these are ongoing projects from previous years. We've gotten in a rhythm, and we're working on what we started and starting to maintain a lot of what we've already completed. Some of our projects are on hold. That might be because of funding or relationships with other stakeholders and partners that we're still, that we're still developing. And then some projects haven't started because we're also working with other partners, but also the weather. We've had a lot of rain, and timing these vegetation management projects can be tricky with the drought and then with all the rain that we've been having. Next, Quinn. So looking at our core, we're looking at a defensible space in our local breakdown. I already mentioned the defensible space program has its own bucket of funding, and Manny will talk more about that. But for our local funding, as Quinn mentioned, or Chief White mentioned, that we do want to start seeking out other funding to support a lot of the MWPA projects and funding that we're doing. This past year, we did try to, or we did apply for a CalFire Force Health Grant as part of the One-Tan Collaborative. That wasn't funded, but that doesn't mean that we're not going to keep seeking that outside funding. So we are looking at opportunities such as that to help increase our capacity. Next, Quinn. So getting right into kind of the bulk of where we're spending our money, which is vegetation management and landscape restoration. The big goals of this are to reduce the chance of ignition, the rate of fire spread, and also the impacts of the natural and the built environment. We know that San Rafael and West Marin County, it's really unique in this way. We do have a lot of interface that we keep building right into our beautiful surroundings. And that creates a lot of opportunity to manage the vegetation around it. A few ways that we've done that, and I really want to highlight right up top, is our demonstration garden at the B Street Community Center. We are almost completed, and I'm sure we can schedule a grand opening to display that. But this is where homeowners can come see what a fire-safe yard or landscape might look like. So as we're, as we're working on these inspections and the compliance, we can also show what we can do after that. Defensible space fuel reduction, that's in the open space of budding residential communities, prescribed herbivory, let's go grazing, also in that defensible space most of the time. Working into the open space, we have started to treat our fire road network into the open space to allow access for emergency responders and hopefully stop a fire before it reaches our community limits. And then we're also working on planning and environmental compliance for larger landscape projects that are kind of going beyond the defensible space zone. Just to add on to that, evacuation improvements. Right up top, we've done a lot of roadside vegetation clearance. So that's making sure that we have access on both sides of the street and the vertical clearance for emergency response. Alert and warning registrations, we've been working on that, especially one-on-one with homeowners during defensible space inspections, but also pretty much any chance we get, we like to promote the signups for those different alerting systems. And then parking boxes. That's one that we've been working on for a little while now. We've had a successful pilot completed in Lincoln Hill. That's really helped with the navigation of those steep, narrow hillside roads. And we're continuing to work in the downtown Dominican areas. And we'll be completing that project as time allows. Quinn, I'm going to pass it over to Manny to talk a little bit about community education outreach.
Thank you, Kate. Welcome, Manny.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me and our team here. Basically, public education outreach has been a big part of the wildfire program moving forward. We really pride ourselves on an emphasis on accessibility for the community, whether that's building out materials in multiple languages, printing physical materials for those who may not have access to it or have difficulty utilizing them. Additionally, we've taken the initiative to reach out to every HOA and Firewise community in the city and try to kind of invite ourselves to annual meetings in hopes to kind of draw in more of a crowd and build that bigger community that's working towards adapting towards wildfire. And then a big step that I'm about to talk about is the one-on-one education that we get from D-Space evaluations. So defensible space is essentially a research-based approach we use to reduce ignition potential around structures or of structures. How we go about doing this is just direct face-to-face contact. During this contact, we hope to educate the community about some of our vegetation standards here, how they can help protect their homes against wildfire, topics such as evacuations, emergency preparedness, as well as resources that we can provide the community on our end. Another big bonus, this is the data collection that we're coming up with. The data collection's been really, really great and helps us kind of drive our decision-making with projects as we move forward. So following the adoption of MWPA and the adoption of the city vegetation man, excuse me, ordinance, the Fire Department set out to kind of start down this track of helping the community adapt towards wildfire. In this, we In this, we set forward the primary, primary objective of data collection and educational approach and taking an educational approach. To accomplish this, we basically hired full three full time staff and 12 seasonal that season in 2021. This is a big success, essentially pulling together 16,000 properties or 16,000 inspections. Throughout these inspections, we're able to communicate with the community, let them know kind of what we're out about doing and some of our goals moving forward, as well as offer free chippers. And we had two mayor core teams to help people with direct assistance who who just weren't able to do the work themselves throughout that year. Towards the end of that season, we issued 1,803 courtesy letters. Courtesy letter was kind of our our way of providing a nudge to specific communities, their specific, excuse me, properties that had a large vegetation hazard or some sort of wildfire hazard. It was our way of saying, reaching out and saying, hey, hey, we noticed you have a large hazard. We would love to help you kind of take steps forward towards mitigation. So walking into 2022, we really put an emphasis on re inspections. Through that, also, we developed the Sanderfell Grant Program. This was a retroactive grant for both worked in 2022 as well as retroactive for the folks who took the initiative in 2021 to do vegetation work. We brought into reality the Foundry Crew as part of our direct assistance team. As well as at the end of that season, we began issuing our first compliant notices. So we know we ask a lot of the community and so we've really proud ourselves on some of the things we can offer back to the community to help them with these steps towards adapting to wildfire. Our grant in 2022, we were able to give out just over $150,000 back to the community. Our direct assistance has been super successful doing 230 properties where we helped do people do work for free. This was kind of handed out with free Juniper Weeks and using Foundry and AmeriCorps, as well as our free chipper program. We use the MWPA chipper program that we help basically do the outreach for, as well as we offer our own city chipper program for requests. So as we kind of walk into 2023, a big focus far is the citywide vegetation standards and really bringing that compliance level up with the goal of community safety. So by January 2023, 85% of the community had taken steps forward kind of towards this, this, you know, adapting to wildfire. And this, this has been been great so far. This is kind of a roadmap we have here up on the screen of where we've been. So in 2021, we did the initial inspections, that was 16,000 inspections. Each one of those properties was left notifications about the city codes. You know, what hazards we may have noted on their property, as well as how to reach out to us. Towards the end of 2021, we moved out the courtesy letters. 2022 brought 9,000 or a little over 9,000 re inspections. As we get into basically 2023, we have our our pre enforcement letters, moving forward to a pre citation notices and then citations. A big thing to bring up is in between each of these steps, we've really made a solid effort each time to reach out to community, offer what we can and kind of do as much as possible to kind of walk folks through this process. So this is an interesting case study that Quinn started to speak a little bit about. We chose one neighborhood, Terra Linda, to talk about. Terra Linda is a great subject for this case study. It's a large area, it has a disproportionate amount of high hazards in it in that the the type of buildings, the basically how close the buildings are together and the high density of flammable plants like juniper and Italian cypress were basically built into the landscape there. So we covered the entirety of Terra Linda in 2021 and then did just under 1,800 inspections in 2022 re inspections. Of those 1,800 inspections, we sent out 309 initial courtesy letters. Of those 309 courtesy letters, that number was, we were able to bring that number down to 200 or 70, 112 pre enforcement notices. From 112 pre enforcement notices, the next notice was the pre citation at seven, only 74. And then of citations, we're able to only have basically implement 19 of those citations. And at each step of the process, one of the big kickers was essentially free drip removal and direct assistance, of which we did over 100 properties in Terra Linda. So kind of like Kate mentioned earlier, as far as our our budgets moving forward, it's pretty similar to the the previous year, the 2023, 2024 budget. Defensible space stays relatively the same because it's a set 20% of the MWPA MWPA budget. The vegetation management budget does fluctuate a little bit, but overall, it's roughly the same budget. Here, so we see something similar. The overall budget for defensible space is roughly the same with a few variations in grant numbers and such. I'm going to hand it back to Kate for the core projects.
Thank you, Manny. Yeah, so just as we saw previously in the presentation, we have a breakdown of our core funding projects for next year. You'll notice they're pretty similar. We have a lot of ongoing maintenance as we get into the the timeline of the tax measure. I do want to point out that we are continuing to put a lot of money into grant management in the form of direct grants to homeowners, but also into direct assistance, which has been really successful for us. I do want to highlight probably the, well, it is the largest line item on this chart is the Ridgewood shaded fuel break implementation. This year, we're focusing on the planning, the environmental compliance, the coordination with our partners and other landholders, including Marin County Parks. A large portion of this project will be on their lands, continuing into private lands and town of Selmo. So part of this is deciding how we're going to implement this. It's a large project composed of mostly hazardous, really dense, unmanaged eucalyptus growth in an area in between San and Selmo and Sanderfell. Geographically, it's on a southwest slope. So we have a lot of factors that increase the the hazard in that area. So putting a a large chunk of money towards starting to implement this project and making a dent in this and an impactful change. This is also an area to seek out outside funding to help subsidize this project. And then.
Yeah, and I want to point out, the last line item here is actually the first time as a city, we've put forward a JPA wide proposal, which is based a lot on what we saw actually work during the pandemic, kind of a full circle approach, which was how do we use trusted messengers to share information and to put information in ways that different portions of our community can understand. And so what we're proposing is a JPA wide project, which means it would come off the the top of the JP of the JP budget before it comes down to our zones. We do think this is a important countywide issue, is to basically put funding into creating peer educators that can then go out and talk about specifically things like evacuation, alert and warning, go bags. And by doing that, we also can make sure we're reaching everyone in their native languages, not just translating to Spanish, but recognizing we have a variety of other languages, as well as making sure we're we're getting through that digital divide. And this is really to build off a lot of the work we've done on the preparedness side of things, as well, like I said, as COVID. But also looking to supplement a lot of our public education outreach efforts. Fire Safe Marin has done an incredible job with their budget. Their website is incredible, the videos they're producing are incredible. But we all have staff capacity of being able to show up at community events and things like that. And so by creating this peer to peer network and providing stipends, we're able to really to build that even further. So we'll see if that gets approved, that needs to go through the board, but it is the first time as a city, we've put forward a proposal that would, I think it ties a lot of different components together and we're excited about that potential.
All right, so looking ahead, what's new and what's growing? So in this next year and years to come, we're going to continue to focus on the citywide vegetation standard compliance rates across the city. As Quinn just mentioned with her JPA wide project, but also our our efforts here locally, we'll be doing continued outreach in Spanish language or other languages in that digital divide. And just like we're partnering with the police department with the Ranger Program to help help with our ignition source and removal, we also want to connect with other departments in the city. So we're seeking to look at other areas where we can overlap with Recreation Department and others with the support of of departments like DPW to find shared objectives and shared goals that we can achieve together. Or continue to work on home hardening and developing resources to help with that. And then focusing on our restoration work, as I just mentioned, we have a lot of eucalyptus, we have a lot of broom. We're looking at helping to restore our landscapes to a more natural vegetation community, which inherently, due to California's history, is more resilient to fire, which leads me right into the point of prescribed fire. That is a tool that we want to start implementing on our landscape. It's the reintroduction of good fire for the ecological benefit, debris management and invasive plant control. That's mostly how we'll be using it. I do want to state that this is not a new concept, it's not a new tool even within Marin County and within Sanderfell. But we do want to start shedding more light on it and communicating that more to the public and to our community, to all of you. Can be accomplished multiple ways. We're going to start with pile burning on some of our projects, it's very controlled. We have suppression resources with all of these. But especially with pile burning, broadcast burning that you can see on the top left, which is a more wide scale landscape level approach to burning. But then there's also tools that we can implement that are more contained, such as air curtain burners, which we have done a demonstration of right here in China Camp State Park on one of our MWPA funded projects. Moving on, as we've mentioned multiple times, a lot of our projects are ongoing. And that's because we know that vegetation continues to grow. You know, as we as we modify the landscape, as we reduce fuel, it is going to continue to grow back. And that requires continual maintenance and inventory of our fuel breaks to see what state they're in. We want to continue monitoring for more ecological reasons to monitor invasive plant regrowth, but also to see if it's shifting around, if we notice it in areas that it wasn't before. And I do want to apply this concept to our defensible space inspection program. You know, as we continue to reach compliance, we want to maintain compliance. And that's really a whole 60 approach. So I'm done, my comments.
Yeah, so we also have our executive director, Mark Brown, on the line, and I believe he had a few things he just wanted to add. Hi, Mark.
There we are.
Hi, Quinn. God, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Kate, council members. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. As mentioned, my name is Mark Brown and I have the honor of being the executive officer for the MWPA. I really am going to try to do my best not to repeat what your awesome staff has said, but maybe just emphasize some of the key points and and point out what an awesome staff that you have. They really are helping us lead the way in wildfire prevention. And what I really appreciate about Sanderfell Fire Staff is that they continue to push our assumptions as we move forward. And I mean, push in question our assumptions in everything. How we approach wildfire prevention, if we didn't change our approach, we would be stuck in the same old paradigm and not putting enough effort towards wildfire prevention. And then how do we incorporate our data? And we have tremendous amounts of data now. And we have a new and exciting evacuation ingress, egress risk assessment that's coming about. And there's been some key members of Sanderfell Staff that's been on our technical advisory team. And their input and their continuing continuous questions and pushing of our assumptions has made that product even better. And then most importantly, I think, is that they continue to push how we apply the appropriate equity leads to all of our work. Speaking of the work, Sanderfell Fires' proposals have all been well thought out and they're completely aligned with the MWPA's values and goals. And then it's great to put out a plan, but then you have to implement that can, you have to execute that plan. And Sanderfell Staff has done a great job of executing that those plans. And it really is a quality staff. I really don't need to sing the praises, but I will. You guys know how good Quinn is. Kate is a is an all star, Manny is leading defensible space evaluations. Their Sanderfell Fires leading the pack when it comes to what we're doing in our defenseable space environment. And of course, it all starts with Chief White and his executive staff and and the chief officer staff and then the troops that are on the engine companies. And I'll give you a piece of advice you don't need, and that is hold on to your staff. Like Chief White was talking about, he's constantly having to fend off people from stealing your staff. Do everything you can to hold on to your staff. And then the MWPA was designed to be lean and mean, not have a lot of people, not have a lot of staff and get these projects executed. But it takes people to get these projects completed. And we sometimes government tends to just throw money at a problem in hopes that that problem goes away. It takes people to go out there and do the work. And I think the Sanderfell Fire has done a good job of balancing that lean and mean concept, but still having enough people and the right people in the right places to get that done. Manny talked about enforcement and that's oftentimes a difficult conversation when people really love their gardens, they love the way the vegetation is around their buildings. But sometimes it does take enforcement and I use an analogy of seat belts. Right now, we look back and we think seat belts, who, do you feel uncomfortable when you get in the car and drive without your seatbelt on? Absolutely, but back in 1986, it actually took a law to be put onto the books to get people to really accept seat belts and it took enforcing that law. There may not have been a lot of tickets that went with that law, but that really helped force compliance when it came to seat belts. And I think that is going to be the necessary tool to get compliance with our defensible space regulations. And I applaud Sanderfell Fire with a step by step approach and there have been, should be no surprises to any of your residents when anything's being enforced. And then I did want to touch on the prescribed fire that Kate was talking about. It really is time to bring back good fire and just as important to acknowledge good smoke. A lot of times prescribed fires have been killed because of the concern about smoke. But the fact of the matter is, smoke is a pay me now or pay me later proposition. We can have smoke that is under our terms, that has less pollutants to the air when we do it in prescribed fire compared to an uncontrolled wildfire that is starting to take out many, many homes. The difference in the smoke is extraordinary. So let's control the type of smoke that we're putting in the air, let's control the greenhouse gases that we're putting in the air compared to uncontrolled wildfire. And then I'll close out with the defensible space. 20% of our budget goes towards defensible space. I think at the end of the 10 year lifespan of Measure C, if we, of course, we're going to try to renew it. But when we look back at those 10 years, I think we're going to say defensible space was our single biggest success. And that was getting our residents to become involved with the work that they have to do to make us all safer. And Sanderfell Fire has been leading the charge with that. So thank you.
Thanks, Mark, and that'll conclude our presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Director, for tuning in, we appreciate it. Lots of good information, but I'm sure there's still some questions, so I will start with the Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you so much for the presentation. I guess my question was around the education. I know that the canal is not like a hot spot for wildfires, but just wondering about, is it still extremely important to to learn about the evacuation routes? And so I was wondering if this is part of the education that you can do over there, or maybe you can talk briefly about it?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. That's part of the goal with the peer to peer is to reach our Spanish speaking communities particularly, and of course, the canal in Sanderfell even more. We do have a bilingual person on staff now that's been doing a lot of outreach through our community organizations to, on exactly that, right? Evacuation, alert and warning, and go bags being those critical. So it's absolutely part of our education plan. We've been working heavily with Fire Safe Marin, making sure we've got material available in Spanish as well and printed material. And that continues to be a focus area and that actually is kind of the the parallel priority as we move. And Manny probably is like, Quinn, how many priorities are we going to have in our how many priorities are we going to have in our defensible space program? But we did start inspections and evaluations last year in the canal to do that one-on-one education. And that's going to be something we continue moving forward. But that education component is critical. Like Mark mentioned, the evacuation study that's coming out is really going to help inform those decisions even more. And we recognize the population density being one of, of course, the biggest concerns as we look at that. I don't know, Mark, if you had anything. I see nods.
Completely agreeing with what you're saying. And also, the number of vehicles that are available for the canal and other areas like that for evacuation is far less than some of the other areas. So that increases the evacuation concerns.
Great. Thank you. That's really good to hear. And then, just super curious, what's the prediction for this year? I mean, lots of rain, probably there's going to be a lot of vegetation. And do you follow the nesting season? Is that going to be like an obstacle? Thank you.
Kate, I'll try on nesting. And if I mess it up, correct me. Yes, we absolutely pay attention to nesting season, which is underway. So all of our work sites are being evaluated for any active nests. And we also really encourage property owners to do the same thing and to make sure they're hiring reputable companies. So if someone's coming to do tree work on their property, that it's a company that's going to check for nests. Okay, great. I learned from them. And then, what are we expecting? Mark, you might be, or Chief White might be more poised to answer this, but in short, rain makes things grow. And when things grow, there's more of it. It's going to be a question, I think, of when it dries out. I haven't heard actually the prediction yet for this year. But it's a cyclical process. And if it's not this year, it'll be next year as we have more vegetation. And like Kate mentioned, the timing is always challenging, especially with our grazing program. We always want to try to start grazing right after the last rain, but we never know that it's the last rain, of course, so that we can make sure that we're getting those grasses while they're still tasty for the plants and before they dry out and start posing a hazard, tasty for the goats, not the plants. Sorry, brain fog. And yeah, I don't know, Mark, if you had anything to add on that.
I really tried to avoid prognosticating. And I joked, said, if you ask me at the end of the fire season, I'll predict what this fire season is going to be like. However, I will say what history says, is that, and we have research to show this, is that the fire season following a drought busting winter is historically a catastrophic fire season. So, you know, I ask you to look around the hills in Marin in the summertime, whether it was a dry winter or a wet winter, do those hills get dry? They get dry every year regardless to how much rain we had during the spring. So we really cannot stop our work. We must remain vigilant with our work, because the chances are just as great this year as any other year to have a devastating fire season.
Okay, thank you so much. Great work. And get those goats going. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
I have a question at a high level on a topic no one talked about. And that is how all of this is financed. I remember creating, when the JPA was created and the vote, but if you could just quickly walk us through how this money comes together, who gets to decide how to spend it, and how it is that our fire department is spending JPA money?
Sure, Mark, I'll start. And then if I mess that up or brain fog again, please. So the tax measure was a 10-year parcel tax. On average, Marin residents paying about $120 to $150 a year, which totals about $20 million for the entire MWPA budget. That breaks down into three main buckets. Sixty percent goes towards what's called the core funding, which really focuses on those mission areas that we talked about. And that breaks down into five zones, because we're going to keep breaking this, yes. It breaks down into five zones, San Rafael being one, which includes our incorporated areas, Lucas Valley, Marinwood is kind of our boundary. And so we get about $2 million, give or take, from that bucket that we kind of manage. And as the main agency in our zone, we handle most of the core projects. But again, work really closely with our partners at the county level, Marinwood, state parks, et cetera. And then the other 40% splits 20-20. And each of those 20% goes directly back to the taxing entity. So the city gets 20% back that we put right back into our residents. 20%, about $1 million, goes towards defensible space program. And then the other 20% is local funding, which is really the money that we get to decide what we want to do with, as long as it meets the overall intent of the MWPA. So one of the big things we do that's unique in San Rafael is we fund our ranger program. So we're really focused on ignition reduction in that sense. We use the rangers not only to remove illegal encampments and illegal ignition items in the open space, as well as though to pre-clear any of our sites, to keep our contractors safe and our mayor core crews safe, as an example. Through our local, also able to do a lot of our public education outreach is funded through there. Our parking box program was funded through local, things like that. And so with the core programs, we usually think of those as having a little bit broader of a big benefit. So vegetation management are the biggest ones in that bucket. Defensible space is mainly, that entire budget is really staffed for the inspections and the one-on-one education, and the outreach and education around that. That's the super high level. Does that hit?
So overall, of all the dollars that are spent on wildfire management in the San Rafael area, what percentage comes from the ballot measure?
Ninety-eight, maybe. Probably almost all of it at this point. Historically, we had very little funding, or it was, we used some of Measure A, like the grazing program was funded through Measure A, but then Measure A expired and Measure C came in before it renewed. So almost all of it at this point is the tax measure. It's absolutely critical to the work we're doing. So the city benefits about $4 million a year directly, with the additional benefit of our neighbors and the work they get to do that also has benefit on us, et cetera.
And all of these projects done in San Rafael are overseen by our, emphasis on our, outstanding team, right?
Yes, with great amount of collaboration, which I also think is what makes them so exceptional. I really can't say enough about the relationships that have been built and with our partners, county parks, county fire. We meet with them regularly, Mark and Ann at the MWPA, as well as their additional staff. But we really are able to control that money. And I think the way the JPA structure was set up, it really does support that. And that gets even into how the voting, so our voting process is actually weighted towards our population. So Councilmember Kurtz's vote carries the weight of the population, not just a one out of 17, which I think is really important to make sure, again, we're reaching everybody and those projects are uniformly accepted and beneficial. Thank you. Of course.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Mayor, thank you. Quinn and everyone who presented tonight had a few questions. In terms of budgets that were delayed, are those going to be expended in this fiscal? Are they going to be carried over? How are we dealing with deferred projects?
Both. So the beautiful thing about the structure is we have that option. So for some of the projects that were delayed, using the alert system that we had proposed putting in China Camp, and then between some environmental concerns and state parks, we're not able to implement that year. So that money will go to the board and will ask to reallocate. So once that money is kind of allocated to our zone, it's more or less ours to do with. But we do have to get board approval to reallocate it to a different type of project, which in that case, in other cases, it might just carry over. So if a project didn't use its full budget in one year, but we're going to continue, say, evacuation routes, although we did use that full budget and then some, we could continue that into the next year and add more to it. So our grant program, as an example, we actually had carryover money from the previous year that supplemented our initial budget request this year. And so that's one of the reasons we're actually requesting a little bit less grant money from a dollar-figure standpoint into 23-24, because we still have that carryover. So we're not in a position where it's a lose it, use it or lose it, which I think is really effective. So it's not forcing us into making decisions just to spend money. We're able to stay very strategic. And of course, the fiscal year being in July and when fire season, there's some challenges just with that timing. So having that flexibility to kind of roll those projects forward is really important. Was there a specific line item you had a question about?
No, I didn't. It was just helpful to understand. It makes sense, everything you're saying. I just wanted to make sure.
And I would say there's slight variations there, too. If it's a core project, we have to go back to the board. If it's a local project, we have a lot more control of that. And so we have that flexibility to kind of move it within our local allocation, which stays right around that million-dollar figure and doesn't shift much. So within that budget, we can play around a little more based on what the needs are. And we do intentionally have a small and responsive project line item, which is intentional to keep us nimble. So we didn't have to pre-predict every single potential hazard site. So if a tree falls, for example, in open space behind someone's home, we're able to be responsive and to go address it before that turns into a hazard.
Thank you. With respect to prescribed burning, were indigenous populations reached out to for consideration?
Yeah, so we, and Mark, you can probably touch on this more, but all of our projects go through environmental compliance, which includes outreach to indigenous groups. To date, I don't believe we've heard much back, but we certainly try to include them in everything.
And I would add, Quinn, that we had a prescribed fire discussion panel where we had actually a member of the Coast Mewaw presenting on tribal practices in the past. And then we keep the great Federated Indians involved in all of our work.
Thank you. And I noticed that overall, it feels like allocations are pretty much stable. And I infer from that, that that means that we believe things are working. Otherwise, we might see adjustments. A, can you validate that inference is the right inference? And then B, as we look towards the tenure out from when we first started, that those allocations, do we predict them to shift over time? I imagine, I mean, I have no idea, actually. So that's why I'm asking. That vegetation management is a massive undertaking. We're just getting started, even though we're in year four, is my assessment. But over time, maybe, I don't know how long into the future, we would start to allocate maybe away from vegetation management. Or once we're there, maintenance would still occupy the same budget year. So I'm just kind of curious, are we anticipating we hold the allocations year over the same?
Yes, and so I think, yes, I think, we think it's working, right? We are continuing to do it because of that. There are some shifts. So as an example, we added additional grazing acres this year, because we had cleared out some of the thicker understory, now we're able to graze it moving forward. And so it's still falling into that vegetation management bucket, but our means of how we're managing that vegetation are able to shift less mechanical, right, less heavy on the landscape, going to a more natural. Like Kate mentioned, we did start the first couple of years really focused on the house-out defensible space approach. So a lot of our open space work has been within 100 to 200 feet of properties. One, the environmental compliance is simpler there. And so we were able to really get that through, hit the ground running, while we work through some of the more complicated compliance on these bigger projects, like the Ridgewood fuel break, as an example. There are going to be big projects, Ridgewood being an example, that take up huge portions of our budget to get that initial work done. And we want to make sure we're allocating maintenance funding moving forward, so that work doesn't, right, go for naught. So we do anticipate a pretty large maintenance budget going forward, but there's different tools in our toolbox, certainly fire being one of them, different treatments of how we're removing plants. And in some cases with invasives, it's a matter of, it's going to take three to five years to take care of the seed beds. And then, once we get to that point, we're in a much better position. We can watch natives spur, things like that. So I do, I see the vegetation management budget staying really big, quite frankly, because of that constant nature of regrowth. And the hope, too, is, a lot of folks had, like, take Italian cypress and juniper removal, that's a one-time big expense, and then it's kind of adapting your landscape. And then, from a property owner's standpoint, you should be in a maintenance mode with minimal cost moving forward. So the grant program should be able to go down. Or refocus on things like roofs, right? We need to start working through our shake roof ordinance. So those are going to have higher costs moving forward in that sense. So it is still a multi-tiered approach, but we're staying really nimble. The structure of the JPA allows us to. But I would anticipate a pretty large vegetation management budget moving forward because of that maintenance, and as we move out and away from homes into some of these other sites.
Great. And then, with respect to San Rafael Municipal Code Chapter 4.12, it's referenced a lot as being pretty much one of our main focuses, FOCI. And when we look at the four other areas, do they have as, like, similar defensible space ordinances? Or is it, are they further behind in terms of what's going on out there?
I like to believe they're further behind. They might, they might say otherwise. But I really do think the adoption of that ordinance and creating the requirement, right, the commitment citywide, that what you do matters, and it's not just an ask because it's going to impact your neighbor, has been essential to our success in moving towards compliance. And I do want to point out, our compliance is not focused on, you can read through the code, right, and you could interpret it like, one plant is going to end up getting you fined. And now, I guess, pretending on the plant, right, a certain plant might. But in general, we're not, what we're issuing these letters for are significant community safety hazards and violations. We're not, we're still taking a very educational-first approach, and things like maintaining gutters, right? That's an annual reoccurring thing, which is why continuing that inspection program is going to be so important. So tying into your previous question, too, my hope is, this is the last year, we have to do citywide, full-fledged, and then we'll start moving into maybe in every three-year and kind of break the city into zones. And so every three years, as an individual property owner, you'll get a knock on the door. But we're just kind of processing that through to help you stay informed and educated, meet any new residents that have moved in. And then, of course, still doing at-request inspections that support the grant program, and anything else we'll continue to do. So certainly a phased approach as we move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Kurtz, and thank you for representing San Rafael in the MWPA. We really appreciate that.
Thank you. I've been honored to be part of this group. It really is amazing. I know we're going to have time for comments. Quinn or Mark, maybe you could speak to, I just, I had my list of most common questions that I get, and you guys did them. So goats, rain, about the plants, we talked about that, prescribed burns, that was definitely a question, and why my juniper? So we get, we get those questions a lot. And it's interesting, used to Haralinda, because a number of residents have called and asked those questions. And so I'm glad you guys all did all of my questions. So that was great. I was wondering if you could talk through a little bit, when we say the environmental process, that's not just a check mark. It really is a huge lift. And actually, not, not, it slows down the work that we have to do, but there is a process. And I was wondering if you could just speak to a project or the process that we go through, or that you go through, in order to implement these projects? Because that also ties into the cost.
Yeah, I'll let Kate take that one. Absolutely. We can't lose them. Just need to be very
Yeah. So Rachel, most of our projects that we're doing, as Quinn mentioned, I've mentioned, are within that 100-foot plus or minus defensible space zone, or off of fire roads, or off of evacuation routes. So those go through a simpler CEQA compliance process called a notice of exemption. They're exempt from CEQA, and it's a more streamlined process to meet the requirements of CEQA. From there, depending on the site and the seasonality of the work, like, we'll go through, if we're going to be working during nesting bird season, every week, on a, on a weekly basis, we'll, we'll hire out biologists to do nesting bird surveys. They'll go through the projects, clear it or not, or they'll put buffers around any nests that they find. Other areas might have more sensitive cultural resources. We know that because we do a, we do a kind of a desktop survey of that. And that will include bringing archaeologists out to any suspected sites. They'll confirm whether or not resources are present, and then we'll work accordingly to that. Bringing it back to Ridgewood, that's going to be more complex environmental compliance process. We're going to be going through the CAL VTP, the California Vegetation Treatment Program. That's a program EIR that the Board of Forestry approved, I think, two years ago, 2020, 2021. And that's where they have essentially done the overall analysis over the state, mostly in the state responsibility areas. That's what they're deeming the treatable landscape. A lot of the Ridgewood project falls into that, but we also have lands adjacent to that treatable landscape, so we can amend that in. And what that allows us to do is work within the framework of that program EIR. And we'll prepare, or we won't, our contractor, will prepare a project-specific analysis, where they will go over and do the cultural studies. They will do a very intense biological survey. And it's a lot more in-depth than the notice of exemptions, because it's a more complex project. But as long as we stay within the framework of that, and we propose treatments that stay within that very narrow band that's allowed, that's the path that we'll be taking.
And I think the other piece I'd add to that is, is we include a lot of public outreach as part of our environmental compliance. And so we really do go above and beyond. And that was also part of the goal with the, with the garden, right? It wasn't just about checking boxes to say, we could make you remove this plant. It's also, what can we add that still has environmental benefit, that has pollinators, drought tolerant, et cetera. So it is, it is a complicated process. And like you mentioned, in some cases, has very high cost, because you're field serving acres and acres of land. And like you mentioned, in some cases has very high cost, because you're field surveying acres and acres of land, looking for a particular plant, to break it down to my type of terms. And so it is, it is extensive. Mark, I see you off mute.
Yeah, you guys had a great job of talking about the process. I wanted to mention relationships. And everyone likes to think they're unique, but I really think Marin County is unique throughout the state. And that's a relationship that we have with our environmental stakeholders. And the partnership that we created called Ecologically Sound Practices Partnership, that actually was formed between the fire agencies and the environmental stakeholders before the MWPA was actually formed. And they've helped create our best management practices that we go through and use those for every implementation of our projects. And then we meet with our environmental stakeholders twice a month to go through our projects, get their feedback and vet those projects with them. So it really is about relationships in this field for us.
Thank you. I appreciate providing that information. Thank you. I still have a few questions, so maybe they were on your list as well. Thank you. So I just have three. The AmeriCorps was listed, and can you just speak to whether they will continue to be a part of the program going forward?
I'd love to have it. Not in the way you have seen them before, largely because of the housing challenges. So one of the, one of the ways we were able to support the AmeriCorps crews initially was, as we were updating facilities, we had some vacant space that we were able to house them, which we don't have now. Having said that, the Fire Foundry is tied into the Conservation Corps North Bay, which is an AmeriCorps program. So the answer is in a different way, but not quite the same way. But the Fire Foundry is a, is a great program that's actually working also as a bridge to training our future firefighters. So it's recruiting folks that might not have had the easiest path into the fire service, providing this opportunity. We're utilizing them in the same way we were using AmeriCorps to do the direct assistance work, as well as open space work. And to be honest, they're more heavily trained, all of them are chainsaw certified, things like that. They have a chipper, so we're able to get a lot more with them done. And then they then have passed into the fire service as well.
No, that's helpful. Will there be a reduction in capacity, though, because of?
Um, I think it's going to be a different capacity. One of the things I think we've learned a lot over the last couple of years is how effective the direct assistance program is, not just for residents, but from a staff time standpoint. So what we're actually looking for is even more opportunities to do that in contracting and just making sure we maintain that direct assistance program. That is a priority for us, and we will find other avenues to continue to provide that.
Okay. And that leads to my next question, actually. Have you found financial hardship to be an issue towards a homeowner taking action? Because you did mention, I mean, it was $250,000, you said it was less than money before. If it is a hardship, obviously there's a correlation there. So could you speak to that?
Yeah, I think absolutely. And I think there's very practical hardships where, like, the money literally isn't in the bank. And then you're also asking people to reprioritize funds that they wanted to spend in a different way. So it has been, it has been a challenge. But I think through the grant program and through the direct assistance, we're really able, able to overcome it, particularly at least with the hazard reduction. Where we haven't started diving into a lot is the restoration work and helping people re-landscape and things like that. And a lot of that is just, again, priorities with risk reduction first. But we're hoping through things like the demonstration garden, we're able to offer people a plan, as well as lower-cost solutions and things like that. And we're, by taking the cost of at least removing the hazard, they can help prioritize their, you know, internally prioritize their spending in terms of the restoration of their landscape.
Thank you. And then the final question, on the Ridgewood project, which I'm just fascinated about. You'd mentioned, and I know it has county and San and Somo, and you had $500,000 there. Do they also have the $500,000 line item in theirs? Because it's a shared kind of.
San and Selmo's is not quite that large of a, but they are contributing. And it's also tying into the greater shaded fuel break parts of it, coming close to it. We see this, and the evacuation study actually studied for the pilot project on that particular area. And those results aren't completely public and final yet. But that has actually validated a lot of our assumptions. And that, you know, we went in with a very educated guess, right? I have a forester on staff for a reason. And so we were able to, to make that. And then the evacuation study just reinforced why that particular area was so important in terms of the risk. So yes, the budget's there, but we also, the JPA was, was structured, and fire operates in that way that knows no bounds and doesn't know boundaries. And so we really have to stay flexible in terms of how we spend. And there's money being spent outside of San Rafael that is directly benefiting San Rafael as well. So I think there's, there's a win-win there. Certainly, the private property gets a little bit trickier to do the private property work for a private landowner. But again, I think the risk reduction overall is really important. And county parks is contributing, of course. They've got their own land stewardship objectives outside of fire management. It's still a big one of them, and was written into Measure A. But there's other ecological things they're focused on there as well.
Yeah. Yeah. And no, you answered that well. Marin County Parks, they, they do oversee that area. I mean, one of the biggest fires we've had in San Rafael was on that hill. And they have done some reduction, they just got rid of any eucalyptus that you couldn't, like, have two people put their arms around. But they've left all the other ones. So it just seems to me that must be part of the work plan of at least the open space from Marin County. And so I'm glad that we're being, we can all put into the pot, then we can get more bang for the buck, is what I'm hoping is happening here.
And the grants are part of that as well, too, going for CAL FIRE grants and for forest management grants as well. So we're hoping the state will also be contributing in that sense as we put forward some of those applications, looking at some of those bigger landscape projects that aren't necessarily our land. As a city, we actually don't manage a huge portion of land that impacts us, right? China Camp State Park being a huge piece of that, as well as all the county parks. So finding these partnerships is essential.
Yeah, no, thank you. That makes sense to have multi-agency grant applications. Fantastic. Well, we'll see if there's more questions that come out from the community or from the council after we hear from the community. So I will open a public comment on this item to folks in the chamber. Yeah, come on down now.
Thank you. Calvatarie Gersel Park. I guess I'm a little confused. I see your patches say San Rafael, though your scope of influence is over Marin. So I'm not quite sure if you're advising the other county, other districts, or you're actually managing every, everything in Marin. So that's one question. A lot of what you just, a lot of what you're talking about is the removal and/or replacement of items that are deemed to be fire hazards, so making the community more resilient to a fire. And I don't know, again, if this is not something you're involved in, I don't need a response to it. But there is, the event that a fire does occur, are you also involved in the extinguishing of the fire and making sure that the services available to perform that act efficiently are actually in place? And just as a random thing, like fire hydrants, oh, there's density going on in Marin, so there's going to be more housing there for more people, probably taller houses. And the number of hydrants probably hasn't been reviewed or replaced since the city was established back, whenever it was established. So I'm wondering if that's something that you guys get involved in or make recommendations for to other agencies to say, we did a lot of analysis, we invested all this money, and based on what we've found, you should really be doing something X, Y, and Z to improve the safety of the county or just San Rafael, if that is in fact your scope. And I assume you still use water putting out fires, so.
We'll answer all the questions, so we'll accumulate your questions and have them answered at the end.
I'm out of time.
Oh, okay. You have 13 more seconds, but okay, we got all those questions. Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers? Not seeing anyone, is there anyone virtually who would like to comment on this item?
I do see a couple hands raised.
Okay.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, this is Bill Cole. And it's a pleasure to be participating, listening to this discussion. So much has happened in three years. I have several comments. One, you got, I sent a letter to you, and I hope you get a chance to read it. We want to commend the San Rafael Fire Department for what has been said by everybody. And that is the excellence of the, of the staff and their outreach and education. And as co-chair of the Dominican Black Canyon Neighborhood Association Firewise Committee, we are beneficiaries of the department's dedicated attention to the needs of the community fire department staff participate in. And they help us plan, they complete, help us with many things in our work. Their participation enables us to assist in explaining dispensable space measures to neighbors, including home inspection processes and enforcement program. And community members gravitate to the fire department staff when they join us at educational sessions, seeking their data and advice. And by substantially investing in staff during the past three years, the San Rafael Fire Department, as part of MWPA, has produced outstanding leaders in development and implementation. The excellence carries over to the work of the Ecologically Sound Practices Partnership, where the same staff continue their outreach in programs and field trips, engaging all MWPA participants. And last, second thing I wanted to mention has to do with the fact that, since you're devoting, you devote 25% to, to home hardening, it's important to take into account the ecology.
Thank you, Bill. And we did receive your letter. So I think you were sharing what you had emailed to us. We did receive it. Thank you.
Hi there, this is Lori Shifrin. We have a, not a city-maintained street, very close to a number of houses up here. And Chief, there was a fire actually on that road, Ivy Lane. And there was a transformer that blew up, and fire truck was definitely on that road when I drove home, seeing all the smoke. Chief Gray actually kindly helped us get rid of the bamboo that was on the street, but not all of it was taken away. He was going the following year to continue, except then he retired. I have questioned this fire department a number of times, and everybody says to me, there's nothing we can do. And that's pretty unacceptable when you have so many houses around it. Nobody actually lives on that street. Their house is back up to that street. And we need help, because nothing's happening. And it's literally just adjacent to all these houses here and makes everything that we do sort of negligible after a while, because there's a lot of bamboo down there. So thank you very much for your time and effort, and thanks for listening.
Thank you.
I see no hands raised, and I'll give everyone a moment. I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment. And the questions that I jotted down, Quinn's role, no one else can have her, no, just kidding. Quinn's role, if you could clarify by that. Two, I wrote, who puts out the fire? Oh, I think you were talking about if there is a fire, how does suppression take place? And next was, how, I interpreted, hopefully I interpreted this correctly, that how does the fire department review new projects and are hydrants added? So I think in housing, how does fire weigh in on that? Is water still used to put out fires? And then the last one is specifically around Ivy Street, not city-owned street. I think those are all of them.
That's what I had to manage.
Well, spotlight on you, starting out.
Yes. So my role is specific to San Rafael. But again, the structure of the MWPA and the collaboration means we work countywide. I don't control the West Marin budget, as an example. I do manage roughly our $4 million budget that impacts San Rafael in the core. But we work closely with, like I said, Marinwood and things like that on some of those other projects. My team's role in suppression, not much of a direct one. But I will say that we work really closely with our suppression staff prior to the incident. We seek out their feedback in terms of areas that they find are risky. They've been instrumental in providing feedback on things like the parking box program. We'll go to them to say, where are the fire roads you're concerned about, where are their houses, things like that? So we work really closely, but don't have a direct role in suppression in that regard. Although we do always go look at any of the fires we've had to learn from them and to see if we've done treatment in the area, how it worked, and things like that. The, how are projects decided hydrant question is a little complicated. In general, the hydrants are, yes, we still use water, as well as chemicals and retardants and other things. But yes, water is still a main tool, right, Chief?
That's it.
Okay. So, so yes, to that. How we come up with those projects really comes back to the goal of the MWPA and the work plan. And hydrants are certainly a critical component, but probably beyond the scope of our discussion here tonight. And I would probably refer either to Chief White or Chief Senate more on that for maybe future information that we could bring to council, if you were interested in that. And then to Lori's question, that particular road is on the radar. And I will say, one of the, one of the tools, and maybe the side benefit of this enforcement, in that case, right? This is mainly yards backing up to this road. And so while we can't go do the work necessarily off the roads, it's not a city-maintained street, through the enforcement process to achieve compliance on those properties, we are going to get there. But as Manny mentioned, we're just kind of in a middle stage where we're still issuing kind of pre-citations. But we are really close to being able to hold those folks accountable to remove the bamboo that's near the roadway and on their property that isn't in compliance with 4.12. So that is going to be a tool we have moving forward with any of the non-city-maintained roads that we haven't, that we don't, we don't take ownership of and therefore can't do direct work on necessarily. But we can do that indirect way of working with the property owners that have bought them to make sure that they're maintaining their vegetation to achieve the same end result.
Fantastic. Well, thank you for answering the questions of the council and the community. I think this is the part where everyone sings your praises. But I will start with the Vice Mayor for closing comments. And if you have any additional questions, you can always do that.
I just wanted to, to thank you for all the work that you are doing and keeping us safe. There's nothing more scary than seeing like a fire near you. I guess, just a comment is that I know that our new Assemblyman, Damon Connolly, one of the bills that he has is AB 99 to stop pesticides along the highways. I imagine then to remove some of the invasives, you might have to, you know, encourage some of the pesticides that we hate. But sometimes they are necessary. So it's just a little comment of like, hey, anything we can do, of course, you know, to reduce, that would be great. But thank you so much for the work and really, really appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy?
I won't sing praises. But I do want to shine some lights on, on, on the praise that is, that is due here. Just to put this in historical context, it is less than four years since we asked the fire department to bring us a bold plan. And they came back with 38 points. And it took us several months with several committees working out the details of those. But that was only four years ago. We had, we went from, basically, we went from Quinn having good intentions. And you were, were you an intern then or something? And that's what we started with. And in four years, we've gone to this. This is, I think, an amazing example of government being responsive to an issue, bringing professional staff to bear on it, getting the collaboration of our neighbors that we needed. And some of the praise light has to get shined on our city manager, who I know sat in unbelievably complicated discussions about how each nickel was going to be allocated. And only when it met his satisfaction did we agree to it. But now, Councilmember Kurtz has that voting power to see that San Rafael gets these programs. So yeah, this is just, just an amazing program that has been brought forward by amazing people across, across the board. And it wouldn't have worked, I think, but for people with the talent like Quinn and the team that she has brought in. People absolutely want to do what Quinn wants. If Quinn asks them, they will do it. And that, but that's true. That's true. That's how you get 90% compliance. So anyway, yes, absolutely fantastic success. We've got, we've got to keep going. So well done, my team, and I look forward to many more years of success.
Well said. Councilmember Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for the presentation today. Building on Councilmember Bushy's comments earlier about, you know, all this was ultimately formulated in a JPA and a tax. But building on what Executive Officer Mark Brown's comments were, this was through relationships. JPAs don't magically just work. I think we have a lot of examples where JPAs are very troubled. It is very encouraging to hear year over year how much progress. And there's a lot of visual evidence, too. I think community members are seeing it on the fire roads. The Defensible Space Grant Management Program has been, I think, largely successful. The engagement with the community has been successful. So none of this was automatic. So thank you every day for working, not only with the community, but with all of the municipalities and districts. I mean, 17, that's incredible. That's a huge number, keeping it all together. So much appreciated. Looking forward to approving this.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz?
Thank you. I have so many comments.
We saved you for last.
Okay. First, I also would like to say, the founders and the writers of this, of this tax measure and of the JPA, we're continually going back and referencing that because it is so. and of the JPA, we're continually going back and referencing that because it is so vital. And I'd also like to say a huge thanks to Pat Randolph, who serves on our Citizen Oversight Committee. They're also very actively engaged in looking, and we're all learning as we go. And what we're all finding out is the technology and the research and the data is constantly coming forward. And this team, Quinn's team and Mark's team, I mean, they're always on top of it and bringing that information forward to the board. The work that really happens is at the Technical Committee and the Operations Committee. And that's to the fire chiefs and to Quinn and other people who are sitting around the table really looking at that data and that information on what to bring forward to the board. Just a quick comment on our, on part of that writing of that parcel tax was that it's based on square footage. And that allows us to ensure and project that we're basically going to get 20 million every year. And so that is really important in terms of us being able to plan these projects and work on these projects. This is our Golden Gate Bridge. As soon as you finish one thing, we're going back and doing it again. And so this is an ongoing work that's going to happen. I do want to put a little plug in. We also have the senior exemption that was also built in. And so people need to know that. But the, the revenue that we're receiving is so critical to this work. The price tag on this work is insane, but it's really much needed. I also want to make sure the Ridgewood Project, that is going to be something near and dear that we're going to be really involved in this year. Mark Brown is very familiar with this as he was the incident commander of the Ridgewood Fire. And so he's also looking at this very carefully from firsthand experience. So I would just like to say that, you know, this, not only is Marin in such an amazing shape because of this JPA, it's being looked at nationally. There are just so many groups that are now contacting Mark and others who are part of this because they do not have this. And we, you know, those who choose to live here, live here for a number of different reasons, but you choose to live in earthquake country. You choose to live in a wild interface, which means we have responsibility. And, and so thank you to Quinn and the team and Chief White and so many others who are involved in this work. This is a lot of work and a lot of work that has not been done in years. And it's going to continue and to be done. So thank you, thank you. I know this is a long presentation in terms of the time of the evening and everything else, but it's so important. I think it's so important for our community to really understand. Huge thanks to, to Mark and to Ann Krelak and the whole team. Their meeting, if you look on the website, all of our meetings are public. They're all available, the material, the videos, everything is there. There's educational sessions. This is, it's really cool and I'm really fortunate and very proud to be part of this group right now because it does feel like we are on the ground of really making significant change. So thank you.
Thank you. Excellent comments. And Rachel, back at you. Thank you for representing San Rafael. It's hard when a JPA starts out just because people aren't sure of the dynamics, you're not sure how it's going to go. And to your point, you're going back again and again and figuring out what's the best way forward and you're working with the colleagues from all the communities that are on there. So thank you. Thank you, Director Brown, for joining us as Rachel, as Vice Mayor Kurtz, now Councilmember Kurtz had mentioned, this is a model for other, other counties in the United States. And again, I always say, can figure it out in Marin and then we'll share it out. So I really appreciate the leadership you're having on MWPA again. I served in the first couple of meetings and it was a lot of different, we'll just say, every city has their own way of doing business. And so having been able to go back and go to the same structure and to be consistent over time is really, really important. Thank you to all the citizens, all the residents who voted for Measure C. This wouldn't even be possible if it hadn't been for all the work and the need and building those relationships that was talked about. I still thank neighborhood groups when I talk about MWPA and Measure C. We'll talk about renewal. You mentioned that tonight, you know? So people really need to understand that their money is actually making a huge, huge difference in terms of safety. And then coming to our team here, if it keeps you here, we will sing your praises. I swear, we will sing, maybe not on tune, but we will sing your praises. So thank you, Quinn. Thank you, Manny, who's been a champion. And we've definitely talked, even on the phone. People do turn to us when they get stuck. Thank you, Kate, for your expertise and Chief White for leading this group. This is so important for making our community safer. That is what the MWPA is about. That's what this work is about. And this program keeps our community safe. So thank you all. With that, we are, what are we doing this evening? We are accepting a report. So by, Councilmember Kurtz, would you like to make a motion?
Thanks. I'd like to make a motion to accept the report. I think, is that it, the whole thing? Yes. Informational report, we'll accept the report.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dan Scaloni.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries 5-0. Thank you so much. We're really grateful to you. Thank you. The last item on our agenda this evening is camping at Albert Park. And we have a little bit of changing of staff, so we'll take a moment to do that. 10:27. We're going to do it. 10:27. I'm not going to ask any questions.
All right. Good evening.
Okay.
Mayor Kate, City Council.
Chris, welcome.
All the people that Chief White acknowledged, I want to also acknowledge. My name is Chris House. I'm the new Assistant Director for Community Development for the city. I'll be working on housing and homelessness programs and really appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm a new resident of San Rafael and really look forward to this chance to make a difference on an issue I care about in my community. Can we go to the PowerPoint?
Yeah.
Right here. Excuse me. One minute, folks. That'll be the other one. This one. Okay. Sorry, everybody. Just if anybody knows.
Madam City Clerk, maybe, yes.
Yep, that's where it is. It looks like it's up, but. All right. Thank you very much. So we're here tonight to talk about a resolution that staff is proposing, which is a strict prohibition of camping at Albert Park. This is responding to a lot of interest from the public. I know all of you have received it. I've received it. We all have. What we would effectively do with this resolution is add Albert Park to the list of places that have a strict prohibition on camping because we've designated them as necessary to prohibit camping for safety, which includes Boyd Park, the parking garages, open space. This prohibition would be applying seasonally each year, March through October, to coincide with the active time at the park of youth sports and, and other events. Before we talk about this and talking about homelessness, I really want to ground us and remind us of the investments that we're making in the permanent solution to homelessness in support of housing development, in our outstanding work with case management agencies who have been amazing partners on this, even the Alternative Response Pilot, many different innovations that we have in the area of homelessness. That is an important thing to remember as we go into this discussion here. The campsites at Albert Park, right now we have about 18 to 25 campsites. It fluctuates. We have 18 people on our by-name list who have not been housed in Albert Park. And we have six people who have been housed out of Albert Park. We hope for that to increase, maybe even double in the next week as the urgency of the matter brings it to more people's attention. Obviously, we are here because, one, SRPD has had a lot of increased calls for service. Many of those have been around sanitation and biohazards. People were leaving themselves, a lot of open substance abuse. And then there has been a number of complaints from the community. A lot of people concerned about safety and their youth going to do youth programs there at the site. Also businesses saying that it's been difficult in that area to do business, to rent an apartment, all of that kind of thing. This is our situation right now. Just a few examples right here. We've seen this many times. And simply, we expect for this to be the situation at Albert Park pretty soon. And that is a conflict that we're here to address. The intended uses of Albert Park, of course, are many youth programs. The Little League Opening Day Event is scheduled for March 18th. If this rain would finally stop, hopefully it will. Then also the preschool center, the bocce courts, the tennis courts. All of this are affected at some level by the camping that is going on there. So for the last couple of months, the last three or four months, actually, we've been meeting on this issue, on this collection of campsites every week as an interdepartmental collaboration. And that's where this proposal comes from, from libraries, community development, the city attorney, Public Works, and of course, our police. We've done great outreach with the agencies. I would say that Homeward Bound, St. Vincent de Paul really have distinguished themselves as, as being great partners and many others such as Downtown Streets, Team Ritter Center and others that I'm probably going to forget, unfortunately. But there is a wide community effort trying to support residents to move into housing. Our wonder, wonderful mental health liaison, Lynn Murphy, has done a tremendous job. Pretty much the six people we've housed is because of her work. We continue providing in a short walking distance, weekly showers, laundry. And our Public Works team has collaborated with residents of the encampment to do cleanups. We're offering temporary storage. We expect for that to pick up as the, as the nearing closure of the encampment comes. But we have also given notice to campers that they need to vacate a week from today at 7:00 AM on March 13th. The authority that we use to actually issue that is an existing ordinance that the city manager can deem that if there's a threat to the public health, safety or welfare, that a park can be closed. But we are asking for something more here because there are compelling circumstances about this park to have a strict closure that is enforced completely. And that is the obstruction of the public use of the park and the increasing problems that we anticipate, also some of the increasing calls for service that are occurring as more people are camping there. So the scope of the resolution we're recommending is an absolute prohibition of March through October. It's a limited resolution to coincide with the sports programs. And that, that would add to these, these enumerated locations for where we strictly prohibit camping, including for people that don't have another place to go. So I look forward to hearing the questions of the council and the public.
Thank you, Chris. I'll start with the Vice Mayor. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you very much for the report. Is, is there like a legality in this seasonality of the resolution? Or could it be like all year round?
Definitely. Well, in, in terms of legality, I'm, I'm joined by our Assistant City Attorney, Ms. Coyle here, and can speak to that. We are, we have received comments from the public about extending it year round. We recommended a limited ordinance at this time. And some of the rationale for that is that we are working on so many other solutions to homelessness right now, including an interim housing project, which I saw you all on about a month ago. And we would hope that there are some factors changed on the ground by the time October comes. Of course, it might be that the council wishes to extend that to make it indefinite now. We'll accept your lead on all of that. But that's our reasoning for limiting this and making it as, as narrow as possible.
Okay.
Yeah. And I'm just happy to add on the legality question. It would be absolutely appropriate this evening if you chose to do a full closure all year long. And the reason that we wanted, that we were recommending to limit it in this case was really, as, as Chris said, to coincide with the high use times at the park. But given that Albert Park is a community park, it's distinguished from, you know, our smaller neighborhood parks because of the, the number of community facilities and programmatic event spaces and the fact that that community draws visitors from across the city and even outside the city boundaries, that that area is unique among the city, within the city's jurisdiction. So under our camping ordinance, it would be something, it, it could be an extra measure that you could take if you found that appropriate.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just curious because I know that park side preschool is there or like daycare, sorry. Preschool, both. There we go. And also I know it's been like a very rainy season, but I know that the tennis courts are always used very frequently as well. So that's why I was, you know, about that. So no more questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
I don't have really specific questions around the proposed ordinance change, but I do have questions around the other things we've talked about in, to help facilitate the homeless. Our NOFA, Notice of Financial, Notice of Funding Availability. I know that's been coming up, coming, you know, brought up a couple of times. I was wondering if we have a actual timing and what are, what are the factors that are driving that timing?
To clarify, on the interim housing units or on our, the NOFA for which specifically?
Our general, I mean, we, we talk about our Notice of Funding Availability. So it would be for housing?
If I may, I think Councilmember Kurtz refers to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, NOFA, Notice of Funding Availability. So Director Janice C. and I spoke about that and we'd like to have a staff report to the council for the first April meeting. It is something that we've done before. We would love your feedback on it, but I do feel very optimistic about getting it out into the community in that same month.
Right. And in terms of the timing, is it waiting for something to happen? Or is it just in terms of our priority to be able to, to resource it, to be able to have the time to work on it?
I think it's fair to say it's more resourcing it. Yeah. So I, there's, there's not a legal obstacle or something like that.
Fair enough. And the second one is around the follow-up from our study session. We left that with lots and lots of questions to you. And I was wondering if there's timing of when those will be coming forward and if they're, we're waiting for all of it to be packaged or are we going to see it come through in different sections?
Okay. Yes, I appreciate that question a lot. Since the study session, we've been bringing on a couple of more consultants that have specialty in this area. We have.
I'm sorry, can you explain what the study session was, just to know?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Okay. So on January 30th, we had a study session in regards to the concept of interim housing. This was widely reported as a study session on tiny homes. We don't call it that because tiny homes are a little bit more permanent. And we are talking about a type of shelter that would involve cabins for individuals. The city is interested in this. We had a lot of tough and fair questions from this council and from the public. So since that study session, we've brought on some more consulting help. We have visited more projects. And we are definitely expecting to work very soon with the Homeless Subcommittee to see, have we adequately addressed those questions? I suspect that we're going to be looking for another city council study session because there, the questions were voluminous, right? And I feel a lot of urgency around making that happen. I'd like to see it in late April or early May.
Right. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chris and Janicey, for reporting today. I have a question, if you could, maybe it's not a question, it's a request. Could you elaborate further? It is a question. Could you elaborate further on what you talked about with respect to the partnerships with Ritter Center and St. Vincent's on what I think you described as placement or more increased opportunity for placement? Can you, can you share a little bit more about how that could look or how we're anticipating that could look?
Definitely. And I would say it is already looking this way because we, we are in weekly contact with all of the case managers, with everyone in the park. We are in contact with the leadership, the executive directors in the last week of both of those agencies. And really, we're trying to make sure that whatever shelter beds become available are available to the folks from Albert Park. The, the agencies have really appreciated the way we've been very successful at doing what we say we're going to do. And when I say we, I really mean Lynn Murphy. When they call saying that there is a bed, there is somebody there very quickly to fill that bed. And that is not always the case with, with everyone out there. And those agencies, I was, I was out there at Jonathan's Place when we brought someone in that had 20 years of living on the street and was very reluctant to come into the housing. Lynn's work with that person made it possible to take advantage of that shelter bed. And I think that is the way that our partnerships are working. You mentioned Ritter as well. And I really want to mention that Ritter is hosting our shower, our mobile shower vehicle, which I actually just went down and toured today. It's very nice, nice, warm showers. There's laundry, which Ritter provides, a food pantry. It's a really beautiful service. And that is just two blocks away from the campsites at Albert Park.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think to clarify, it's Homeward Bound is actually for Jonathan's Place.
Thank you.
Yeah, just want to make sure we give props.
Homeward Bound the organization, Jonathan's Place the site.
Right. Thank you. Councilmember Bushy, questions?
I definitely have a question. I see in the report on your list of all the things that the city has done, and you've elaborated on your very productive work with Homeward Bound and Ritter and St. Vincent's. Missing from that list is the Health and Human Services Agency for this area, which is the county of Marin, I believe. And if I accurately read their budget, I believe they have a, a staff of 11 people directed at homelessness issues with a budget of $7 million. I'm wondering how many of those resources were brought to bear on the questions that the, the human beings in dire need of Health and Human Services in Albert Park?
Well, that is definitely a question that I can work on getting an answer for. They are providing case management for many of them. We know that we, as a city, are pooling our funds with other cities and with the county to fund a lot of case management. And there is a lot of support like that for folks at, at Albert Park. I would also say that the county is easily the main way that we are able to permanently end someone's homelessness by putting them into a voucher through the Marin Housing Authority. We've partnered really well on that. An example is in our service support area, SSA. Currently, of the 47 people who were housed at that, or who stayed really at that service support area, 31 of the 47 have been permanently housed at this point. And the majority of those are going to be on vouchers that came through our partnerships with the county.
But did their staff of 11 with their budget of $7 million contribute anything other than these federally funded vouchers?
If, if you mean that have they been meeting with us and contributing funding around Albert Park?
Well, funding would be nice, but because they have such a large staff, you know, Lynn can't do everything. It would be nice if there were other people out there helping her. The sense I'm getting is that there have, there have been no on-the-ground resources provided by the county.
I'd like to think about that, actually. I, I know that the county, county health has been out at the site with a mobile van. I met a county worker who was doing hepatitis C outreach. And I don't necessarily know all of the funding relationships that are going into the resources that are on the ground. Because the county funds a lot of case management, I think that that's probably how they're doing it. But in terms of having county homelessness staff on the ground, that hasn't been something that, that has been part of our partnership that way.
And, and just to sort of summarize this all up, are you 100% confident that every resource that could possibly be obtained from the county was obtained with regard to these people?
I, I really don't know how to answer that question, actually. I mean, I'm just learning to, I'm learning the, the scope and scale of the resources right now. I would say that they've been very supportive and very responsive to me when we applied just now for encampment resolution funds for case management for the residents at Albert Park. We did that as a city, but that was our choice back before I began. And we really coordinated the application very much with the county. I received a lot of support with that. So I've been satisfied with the way the staff has been responding on things so far.
Fantastic. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. And I just have one question you mentioned in the, in your presentation. And I know it's in the staff report, but could you speak to the alternative response program? Because this is something that San Rafael is bringing to the safety net. And I think it's really critical for the folks that are on our street.
Yes, I would love to. And actually, I believe that Lieutenant Huber is, is here. I might, if it's all right with you, I'd like to call on you or Chief Spiller to, to speak to the program as the real champions of this.
Yeah, just give a quick summary of what it is and what the timeline might be.
Absolutely. A lot of progress. We're super excited about our alternative response resource, which will really serve to support these vulnerable populations in our community, not only from the unhoused, but also for those that are suffering mental health crises. So Petaluma People's Services has hired five people so far. They've assigned a supervisor to the San Rafael area. So progress is being made. Staff in the police department is starting to train with communications and call-taking and those types of things. We met with Fire Command this morning, talked about the response protocols. And we expect to see the safe resource on the street by March 27.
Fantastic. Thank you, Chief.
Yep.
Thank you. All right. Well, let's open up a public comment on this item. I will look to those in the chamber. So yes, come on down. We're very informal formal here. You can introduce yourself. You're not required to say your name, but if you so choose your name and what part of San Rafael, again, if you so choose where you're from.
Thank you very much. I am Phil Mooney, a resident of Gerstle Park and a parent of two children that attend Parkside Preschool and Children's Center in Albert Park. Thank you for carefully considering this issue and giving me time to speak tonight. I want to start by thanking Chris and city staff for compiling a thorough and thoughtful report on the current conditions at Albert Park. I agree with the conclusions of the staff report that, quote, "compelling circumstances exist at this time to prohibit camping at Albert Park." I'm here to encourage you to adopt the resolution as written. I am concerned about the timing of the final deadline to vacate the park, which falls on a rainy Monday morning. This timing coincides with the beginning of the school day at Parkside Preschool. I hope that the mental health liaison we've been hearing about, Lynn Murphy and other service providers can be on hand to help ensure a kind and humane process when removing some of our most vulnerable residents. And I hope they're given help when packing up their belongings. This is especially important, given that young children and their parents will be present during this process. Finally, I would like to encourage the city and this council to continue to build on the good work that you've been doing and continue investing in long-term solutions such as permanent supportive housing and programs that alleviate suffering and provide hope and support for residents experiencing homelessness. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Matt Butler, I'm resident of San Rafael. And I've been dealing with San Rafael and Marin County's homeless problem for 35 years. I want to point out to everybody that nobody is camping in the park. People are living in the park. And they are living in the park because they cannot house themselves. And they cannot house themselves because California big government has a 100-year history of using housing as a weapon against its citizens. Go back to Governor Leland Stanford's policies. Go back to Hastings, Serenus Hastings' policies. These people were racists. These people were, were bigots. And they are the people who formed the bedrock and the foundation of California's legislative process and California's building restrictions, which are overly burdensome, restrictive, and draconian. And we heard from the Latino community here who are living hand to mouth, all they can do to house themselves. And we have people living all over the streets here because we have a shortage of housing. And we need to allow the citizens to build housings. And we need to take design review boards and defang them and, and citizen oversight committees and really take their power away. We need to acknowledge the failures of the city planners and community development directors who've been running the show for the last 50 years. And that's why we're in the mess we're in. And we are in a mess. Any society that has 10% of its population either living on the street, living in their cars, or living eight people in a two-bedroom apartment that they can't afford, is a society that's in serious trouble. We are in decline. And you've got 13 bullet points here of things you're working on to try to patch up the homeless problem, but nowhere in there does it say, let's, if somebody wants to build a house for themselves, it meets seismic standards, basic plumbing and electrical codes, and makes the fire department happy, let's let them build a house. Let's not bury them with 20 different things that run the cost through the roof. Contractors tell me right now, if they, it's going to cost them 1.2, 1.4 million to build a house in San Rafael, and they can't make a profit doing it. So we got a mess on our hands. And I hope you're not following in the playbook of your predecessors because that's what got us here.
Okay. Yeah, come on down.
I just want to add a little bit to what this gentleman was talking about, the resources that are out there. A lot of them are community-funded, you know, donations. And because everyone is so tight right now, I, there's a gentleman out there that was walking around with a blanket and shorts. And I was trying to get him a sleeping bag. And I went to, called every agency. I went to every place every day. And I never could get him a sleeping bag. I ended up buying him money, goodwill out of my money, you know, because I couldn't, I couldn't deal with seeing him out there like that. So it might look good on paper that there's this agency that, but everyone is passing the buck to the next person. And it's just really needs to be some money allocated to the Ritter House. And St. Vincent de Paul, maybe get some money from the Catholic Church because it's not really getting any from there. And, you know, just look a little deeper into what we think is available because it's, it's really mine. And these people, and, you know, where are they going to go if there isn't a bed available? Where are they going to go? They're just going to pop up somewhere else and pop up somewhere else, just more scattered. You know, we, we need a situation where somewhere is allotted for them to go. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else in the chamber? Hi.
Thank you for offering this time and space for comment, Mayor Kate and esteemed council members. I am Paul Santagata, and I share my thoughts as a proud parent of two children, one at Parkside Preschool, one at Parkside Aftercare. And as a San Rafael community member that really yearns for public parks to be able to be accessible for all. In the fall of 2022, I interacted with several folks here and across the SRPD and really wanted to thank you for how genuinely eager you were to hear parents' concerns about the encampments in the park. And really, the swift action. At the time, a low point probably came when there was so much urine coming in from where the folks were camping that it was going to where the school kids were playing. That combined with a mix of tobacco smoke and weed smoke, the kids couldn't go outside. Through a mix of parents calling, we were noticing crimes in the area. The San Rafael Police Department was immediately responding. And that was awesome to see. It was their first time kind of dealing with something of just kind of making requests and seeing that action. But that was during the fall, so that would be outside of the time period that's, that's being discussed of just a smaller window that seems to be more for baseball season and less for just the children overall. Today, we find ourselves at the park again a bit feeling unsafe and unusable. On Friday morning on the third, I counted roughly 30 tents and structures unleashed dogs. And even with the rain, a fairly intense smell of human waste. The playground is again often unused due to park residents sleeping or drinking nearby. And families and teachers walk around the whole block to avoid walking past the encampments. The encampments are on both sides of the path. My heart goes out to the unhoused that are seeking refuge in the park, especially during the intensity rainy season. They deserve to feel safe and supported and hope the city further invests its efforts. I ask you to please adopt the no camping ordinance for Albert Park with the modification that it be extended year round and seek to invest in permanent supportive housing options for individuals and families experiencing homelessness in our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else in the chambers? Yeah, come on down.
My name is Robert Brown. I stand in unity with the homeless people at Albert's Park. I've read the city report for this issue. I've also recently read the county report concerning homelessness here. I'm just going to get right to it. As the young woman that was here before me said, there's nowhere for these people to go, number one. And anywhere they do go, they will have the same issues as far as the human waste is concerned, garbage is concerned. I would like to say, sir, I, now, I don't know really for certain. Maybe they've changed this recently, but as far as you, you mentioned the showers and the laundry facilities, those don't exist. And like I said, unless they've changed them really recently, you know, I could be wrong. So that's not really within the two blocks of that park. This is a really tough issue. I understand that because there's very limited space in Marin County. As far as I know, the county has been doing everything they can. They are really ahead of the game as far as any other county in California is concerned with the housing. I just really want to say right now, thank you to everybody that has put in a lot of effort and hard work. I don't think that this is a bad resolution for the park. I think the timing is wrong. I think maybe if you could please allow some of these folks a little more time for a game plan or something, a place for them to actually go. I don't know how that's going to work. I understand there's a county meeting tomorrow morning at 7:00. I also understand that mostly that this has been an issue that the county takes responsibility for in the past. I see that some things have changed as according to your report. As far as money is concerned, I think that's really good. You guys have been doing a really good job. But yeah, that's my main issue. Where, where are people going to go? And they're going to have the same issues wherever they go. Thank you so very much.
Thank you for your comment. I'm not seeing anyone else in the chamber, sir. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see. You popped up. Nope, go ahead. Go ahead.
I just have two questions. One is, when the folks are relocated, will that section of the park be restored? Or it sounds like there was a lot of concerns about health and safety. So cleaning that up would be helpful for all the kids that might be walking through there. And I don't, I don't know what supportive housing, I'm sorry. I don't know what they're mean by supportive housing. If it is a, you take a person and give them a, a place to live and then make sure that they're adjusting to that new lifestyle rather than just, we got that done, let's go do something else. That's it.
Thank you. Okay. Now, not seeing anyone else in the chambers. Is there anyone online who would like to comment on this item?
Yes, I do see some hand raised.
Hi, this is Katie Fleet.
Hi, this is Katie Fleet. I'm a parent and a Gerstle Park resident. My five-year-old daughter attends the Parkside Children's Center. So I'm very pleased to see all the efforts the city has engaged in to address the root causes of homelessness and also to provide supportive services and housing alternatives to the individuals who are living in these encampments. We've had discussions about this issue in the past, especially last October around the encampment that was very close to the Parkside Children's Center. And it's great to see the city taking more decisive action. I know at the time we addressed this last, there was reference to Martin versus Boise kind of tying the city's hands on the issue. And I'm really glad to hear the city attorney taking the position that Martin versus Boise does allow significant action around this issue. I'm a lawyer and I've read the case many, many times and I've read 50 some cases citing it. And I strongly support the position that Martin v. Boise does not preclude the kind of action taken here. I support the proposal, but I also do support that it be year round. Baseball is seasonal, sports are seasonal, child welfare is not seasonal. The children at Parkside are in the city's care. We as parents have our children there and we entrust you to take care of them. What was happening last October was totally unacceptable. There were people drinking and smoking and pooping and peeing and using drugs and, you know, it's literally right behind the fence that our children, my five-year-old, you know, four-year-old for part of the time, you know, where she was. And that's just untenable and I'm very sympathetic to all the concerns about, you know, others that have been raised, but these are little kids entrusted to the city and I ask you to take the strongest possible action to protect them year round. You know, October, November, December, January, February.
Thank you. And we received your email as well.
Hi there, this is Lori. We actually brought this up in the Federation meeting about the seasonal aspect of this. And when I read your report, it says things like seasonal prohibition and programmatic events in the park, which to me, I don't participate in any of those, but I do watch parents literally get out of their cars with their kids, go over to the playground, look up, turn around and leave. And I've asked a couple of them in the past few days why they're leaving and some of them didn't want to answer me and some of them just said they were very uncomfortable with what they were seeing. That's not okay for the residents and these are not people who are paying for classes. These are people that literally just want to use our very new, very beautiful park. So I also support, I can't even imagine that you're not doing this year round because it's been happening the last few months. I had no idea what your season was at the time, but I've been watching this now for a couple of months and I don't even see kids playing in the park behind the bocce ball courts anymore. So, I mean, granted it's wet, but that generally doesn't stop those who play soccer. So thank you and I do hope that you change it to be year round. That's, I think, what the residents deserve and especially the parents of the school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, hi, Jason Sarris here. I want the general public and residents of San Rafael to know that the city is planning on banning camping at Albert's Park without a plan in place or any real options for people. And if our unhoused neighbors reconvene at another park, which is more than likely, then everyone should know that the blame for this happening falls squarely on the shoulders of the city of San Rafael. Kicking the proverbial can down the road solves absolutely nothing. I looked at your staff report and, you know, the SSA, you had 31 out of 47 people housed, permanently housed. And, you know, Nevado's doing the same thing with their camp there. It's really turned into a pathway for housing. It's a nice stepping stone while you wait for your tiny homes to happen, which I'm not sure is going to happen anytime soon because you want the county to pay for it or supply the land or somebody to donate the land. So that's something that's going to happen down the line. But where do these people go in the meantime? I mean, they're going to congregate at another park, public property. You know, if you keep on closing parks and closing off all public property, then you're definitely flirting with violating Martin versus Boise. At this point, there's what, 20 tents? There's not 20 beds in Marin County. And so, you know, I think you're flirting with violating Martin versus Boise now. And it's going to get to the point where one person who is unhoused is going to say that's enough. And I'm a, you know, all it takes is one person. I'm a testament to that. So, you know, I don't want to see it go down that way, but I.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, this is Robbie Pelson. To bring you back to August of last year, the city of San Francisco admonished San Rafael when a San Rafael police officer essentially dumped a human being right in the middle of San Francisco who was unhoused. And then in the same month, you had Officer Nail beat brutally, a man who was housing insecure, trying to, you know, be outside and socialize, which is what people, it's all people have. And I think people listening need to understand that that's the common behavior that people outside experience from San Rafael police. That's the norm and you only get glimpses of it. And you think about all those children that the callers are concerned about, how should they feel about the violence inflicted by this city against its own residents? And that's all.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Jeffrey. I'm a resident of Gerstle Park and I'm the mother to two children, one of whom attends Parkside Aftercare now and one of whom will in the fall. We've talked to the city about this issue before, since kids are present all day, essentially year round at Parkside, not just as part of the school, but also as part of the aftercare and camps. I call in support of this ordinance, but I agree that it should be extended to be year round. We wrote the council this fall about the encampment that would set up the rear boundary at Parkside. This poses a major health and safety issue. Urine, feces, dogs, drugs, the list goes on. Our kids couldn't use the playground, which is not the point of why I send my child to aftercare. That is very important to a child's well-being too. So it's vital that you extend this ordinance to be year round. It passes muster under Martin v. Boise. I too am a lawyer, like one of the other folks that spoke and spent some time researching this issue. I would suggest, as well as another modification to the ordinance, that perhaps this does not occur on Monday, March 13th. That is a school holiday, so the Parkside Aftercare will be running a camp all day in addition to all the preschool kids that are there. So maybe the council could look at another date for the ordinance. I also wanted to note that several cities have passed ordinances for a 200 to 500 foot buffer between encampments and childcare facilities and schools. Those cities include Los Angeles, Sacramento, San Diego and Portland. Last time I looked into this issue in the fall. I certainly appreciate the council taking this issue into concern. I am compassionate for all the folks that are unhoused, especially in this weather right now. And certainly the town can seek solutions to more permanent housing. In the meantime, not every public property is appropriate to have, to have camping at. And certainly Albert Park is one of those properties where that is inappropriate. The other park you should consider adding to this ordinance is Gerstle Park. I do worry this population will move up there and that's a park that many of us use in the community. Thank you for your time.
Hello, I'm Lucy Hollingsworth. I'm a senior policy attorney with Legal Aid of Marin. In partnership with Marin Superior Court in St. Vincent de Paul, we help run the Marin Community Court Program, which aims to eliminate owner's fines and fees from driving infractions, parking citations and lifestyle tickets. Many of our participants are unhoused San Rafael residents that are just trying to survive day to day. The threat of sweeps and lifestyle tickets such as obstructing sidewalks, which has a fine of over $300 makes this significantly harder. Instead of working with service providers and focusing on reducing barriers to housing, our clients report having to spend most of their time protecting their worldly belongings while answering basic needs for food, hygiene and rest. While we agree that the city can legally limit camping in certain and limited public areas, we urge the city to meaningfully adopt solutions that puts an end to sweeps and camp closures. Nevado's Camp Compassion is one such example and provides protection to unhoused neighbors and accessibility for supportive services. We appreciate the long-term solutions being worked on, but sweeping unhoused residents in the meantime is only exacerbating the problem. We ask the city to work with unhoused residents and service providers to establish a safe place to rest before any more camps are closed. Thank you.
Hi, can I be heard?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, thank you so much. This has been very informative. I just wanted to echo what a couple other commenters mentioned is, once they move from that park, Albert Park, they'll go to a different park. And I live near Gerstle Park and I'm already seeing people sleeping there in sleeping bags. So I'm wondering if the ordinance could also add Gerstle Park because that's going to be the natural place that people will go. Thank you so much.
I see no other hands raised. I'll give everyone just a moment. I see no further public comments.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and bring it back. So I, let's see, I had seven questions. Let's see if they're the same. What is the support of folks during the closure, the actual closure? Shower information and laundry information, if you could repeat that. Three, the ongoing support and outreach to the folks that have been camping there? What did they, I would answer, what have they been receiving and what can they receive after? What will happen to the section of the park after it has been restored? What is supportive housing? It's true, we use terms. Thank you for reminding us. We don't always define them. Six, is there flexibility around the actual closure date? There's some concern by parents as it coincides with Parkside. And then finally, what is the potential of adding Gerstle Park? And of course, we did hear comments and you've already answered the question about being year round versus seasonal, which the council can deliberate on after we have these questions answered.
Take it away, Chris.
All right, great. So I'll start out with addressing some of the issue of support during closure. And I would be interested if one of my colleagues from the police department would like to say anything from their perspective too. But one of my primary goals, at least in this process, is that we have more supportive resources there than punitive resources. And what that means is that every case manager working in San Rafael has this on their calendar. We've put it, we've sent them an invite to it in order for them to be there and to have some of the problem solving conversations with someone that doesn't know where to go and hasn't been able to avail themselves of any, of any help. Lieutenant Huber?
Hello, members of council, Mayor Kate. Carl Huber with San Rafael Police Department. To echo Chris's sentiments, yes, we were looking at having as many service providers there as we could possibly obtain that morning. Also to provide a level of storage for those individuals who are going into shelter housing so they can keep a certain number of their belongings. And there, we were hoping to have the care team to, to be there to provide transportation to the shelter for those who needed transportation to the shelter.
So the information on the shower program and I think the person who made the comment mentioned that maybe it's changed recently and it actually has. So want to make sure to get this information out there. Currently is occurring between 1:00 and 3:00 PM every Monday at Ritter. I can assure you it is going on right now. I was just down there today and I checked the shower to make sure it was warm and everything. So it's a very, very great program that we're doing. So I hope that folks avail themselves of it. I think that the average usage is about 10 people per time and we'd love to see that increase a great deal actually, as the word gets out that it's on Monday there. A little bit on ongoing support and permanent supportive housing. We found that we are very effective at permanently ending a person's homelessness with the proper amount of case management following them into housing. The different kind of interventions that we undergo with a person on the streets are very much around just keeping them safe. And 95% of the case manager's work is trying to find a place for them to call home. Once that's done, we have the opportunity as service providers to begin to provide healthcare services that may have been neglected for a long time. People may be able to enter into treatment because of the stability and safety that they now feel that they didn't feel while they were potentially in a camping or other situation. We just find that people have an opportunity to comprehensively work on their lives, potentially even gain employment and/or volunteer in their community because of the stability, because of the capability to sleep well, have a shower and maintain consistent treatment. So to the caller that was asking about that, that is our goal. That is the model that organizations like Homeward Bound and St. Vincent de Paul are pursuing in our city and that we're, that we as a city have been supporting financially. And there are many others that I'm likely forgetting right now, so I apologize for that. But, but we do have a lot of good work keeping people in housing after we place them there. So a question came up about the rehabilitation of the site afterwards. Definitely, that is going to be the case. We would expect that there is going to be a lot of garbage removal, that a lot of people will leave things behind that are not valuable to them, that they will avail themselves of storage or bring with them things that are valuable to them. We have been doing cleanups in whatever area we can with cooperation of the folks that are camping there. And we'll be doing that in a greater way to prepare for, for the youth sport seasons. Let's see, next, is there flexibility around the closure date? What I want to say, I don't know. I think that at this point, we're pretty, we're pretty committed to that, but we are, of course, always watching the weather and want this to be a kind and humane process as we've already talked about. We started noticing this specific date and time on February 21st, which is a lot of notice for people to break down their campsites several weeks. Now, at the same time, I'm very aware that we have vulnerable people in the park and if it's raining, they're going to be very challenged to be able to do that and that'll be taken into account. Is there any other questions?
I think just a quick definition, quick definition on supportive housing. You did allude to it, but just give us two sentences.
Supportive, supportive housing is housing that is affordable for a formerly homeless person and that comes with the types of supportive services that will help them transition permanently into that housing and avoid a return to homelessness.
Thank you. And then the last question, and this might be for the assistant city attorneys around inclusion of additional parks, specifically Gerstle Park was.
Yeah, so I'll speak to that in reference back to Martin v. Boise since several of the callers had raised that case. The case law from Martin Boise tells us that a city cannot enforce no camping laws on individuals on all public property of a city if the individuals do not have alternative access to shelter. And so the way that the, our current ordinance is written gives us, it complies with Martin v. Boise and I think gives us a lot of flexibility to address areas throughout the city as they come up. And the way that we do that is that we have a general prohibition on camping citywide. However, nothing in that ordinance prohibits camping on all public property. And that includes parks where there is no alternative shelter available to the person camping. And so what we're doing at Albert Park is that we're adding an additional layer where we're going to be strictly enforcing it at that park. And we've done that at a few other limited places in the city. And we've done that at a few other limited places in the city. Uh, Chris had mentioned that at Boyd Park and, um, parking garages. Um, that said, places like Gersel and other areas where we see, uh, uh, campers, um, throughout the city, we still have our general ordinance tools available to us to do enforcement should the need arise. Um, but we do need to look at whether, um, you know, an individual has access to shelter in any given situation. Um, some of the callers earlier talked about, um, some of the interactions, uh, with the child daycare, uh, the childcare center back in October. Um, and that was one of the tools that police department used as an effective, um, way to move some of the campers that were immediately abutting the childcare center and moving them away from that area. Um, we're, we're not saying that that certainly does not eliminate all of the concerns, but that is a strategy that we can do to relocate individuals, um, if that particular spot that they're camping in is, is inappropriate for that given location.
Thank you. Thank you for, um, those answers and I'm going to bring it back to the council, uh, for their comments and specifically I would like, uh, my colleagues to weigh in on the proposed, um, staff report, which is seasonal, but I'll show the community input received regarding year round. And I'll start with you, Vice Mayor.
Um, well, I wanted to start by saying how sad that we're having this conversation and talking about children, talking about our neighbors, you know, that they are, um, unhoused and having to use the bathroom there, you know? I mean, it is extremely sad. Makes me think about the brave community from the canal that they came and how close they are from losing their homes as well. So, um, sometimes I think all the money and time and resources that we put in people that they're unhoused. And, and we also put a lot of effort and energy into housing, but what else can we do in terms of like tenant protection? So this, you know, is not, you know, it is not going, going to get any, any better. I mean, I don't, just don't see that path. So anyway, I'm a little bit frustrated, so I apologize for that. Um, I believe that this, um, resolution is good. Um, I will advocate to keep it like, um, year round because I believe there are kids all year, they are like parkside, uh, they are the kids from Davison that they cross that area all the time. I, I'm, I'm very familiar with, uh, with Albert's Park and all the facilities because I have been there with my family. So, um, I would love to endorse this as a year round resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Hill?
Mayor, thank you, Chris. Thank you, Genevieve and everyone who put time into this. I concur with the Vice Mayor. This is a, obviously a regrettable situation we find ourselves in. I think, um, I too support, um, moving to adjust this to a year round, uh, resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Kurtz?
Thank you, um, for the report, Chris. It's great to have you on board. Um, I'd say, you know, I also support moving this to a full year. Um, being in support of this ordinance or not, expanding it or not to the full year does not really address the needs of those experiencing homelessness. Um, as you've seen, most of tonight's conversation has been about the overall situation for those experiencing homelessness, more so than the ordinance conversation. Um, but it is addressing the purpose of the park and the members of the community who use the park. So I fully understand the need to make Albert Park be a safe and clean, um, place for the community. So at the same time, we need to continue to push for the urgency and I appreciate that you've mentioned that a number of times to address the need and deliver on interim supportive housing. Um, to me, leading with dignity and compassion, and I know I've heard those words many times coming from the dais as well as from the staff, um, meetings with that, leading with action and urgency. And, um, we have lives on the line who are in our community, um, and we need to continue to have these conversations, um, to, you know, move that needle forward around interim supportive housing. And I do find it a little bit ironic that we started this evening recognizing how everyone came together during COVID and absolutely true. Um, so I know we can do it. I know that, you know, we don't need to go to the point of having, declaring a local state of emergency, um, because, but I know that our, our dais and our work that we're doing, we can make that difference. Um, we can't point the finger to another, or agency at this point. Um, we need to partner with everyone and, and figure out how to, you know, support the community.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Bushy?
Well, I've been at Albert Park for, uh, opening day of Little League, um, and it's a great day and I, um, you know, the season is a wonderful, um, part of the year, um, but, um, school year, it runs through October and March. Um, so I think that that supports a, a year round, um, uh, prohibition. Um, that said, I agree with, um, with my colleagues that we are just, um, addressing a very small on-the-ground issue that's, um, here in Santa Fel and that there is a much, um, bigger issue, um, a, a bigger issue that we can't solve, um, just with the resources that we have. Um, and rebuilding or, um, trying to create, um, or recreate, um, a health and human services agency just for Santa Fel, um, is just not something that, um, that we have the resources to do. Um, you know, I, I have the utmost respect for, um, Lieutenant Huber, who is SWAT-trained officer. Um, people in Santa Fel need him for that purpose. Um, and that, um, I understand that we, um, have this problem in our community, but there are other agencies, um, whose responsibility, um, we should not be too eager to take on. Um, and I, I fear that sometimes, um, we, um, are compelled by the best of intentions, um, and can go too far. Um, but that said, um, I, um, completely support, um, the ordinance as presented with the modification that it be year round.
Thank you. And I'll just make a few comments. Um, I concur with my colleagues around a year round. Um, we've heard from the community and with the Parkside and other community programming. Um, so hopefully that's something, uh, that can be talked, uh, mentioned in the resolution when we get to that point. Um, and just to remind everyone, the goal, the gold standard here is permanent supportive housing. The city works diligently on all different levels with the county, with all the players to have permanent supportive housing. Having said that, we also know for some folks, that's a little bit out of reach right away. So I share both the frustration, um, and the, at the impact of having unhoused individuals and the compassion of how can we have unhoused individuals in our, you know, in, in our society? And there is a tension between both of those things. We don't build housing. We can help make housing be created. We're definitely supportive when, uh, projects come through, uh, and we have the manifestations of encampments on, uh, on our streets. And as Councilmember Bushy has mentioned, there's been a frustration, um, with maybe not, the, the county very much focusing on housing as, at, versus the encampments and they have, they have their reasoning. It's a, it's a both and. I think the city's been very clear, we support permanent supportive housing and we want to continue to have resources and support for folks that are in encampments. We're not the only component here. There, there is no way we can solve this on our own and thank God for Homeward Bound. I want to give them a shout out, St. Vincent in Ritter, as well as Bucklou, uh, downtown streets team. I'm going to try to name them all too as well. Really because we, we are, uh, part of a broad safety net. There's not one solution, not one agency, not one program that, that, that can help, uh, get folks off of the streets into housing. And I think we're committed to trying to find all of them. We talked earlier about the interim housing, uh, study session. That's another piece we're looking at. So, um, while it is, uh, always tough, um, to have conversations when we don't have a perfect solution for the folks that will be relocated from there, I am confident that with the outreach, um, from Lynn Murphy, from our community-based organizations, the ongoing conversations that have taken place, that folks will have options available to them. They've been offered options over the last couple of weeks. Um, and I'm hopeful that they'll continue to take them up on these options and get into housing. So, uh, with that, I think you heard some clear direction. Does it just need to be spoken into the resolution?
Yeah, so if I can make a suggestion, we can just, um, excise, uh, number two on the resolution. So you can adopt the resolution, um, accepting paragraph two.
Accepting A.S. or E.X. accepting?
Accepting E.X.
Okay, sorry. I just said sorry.
Removing.
Removing.
Removing. And that's, that's why it's a separate paragraph for this reason. So, yeah, you would just adopt it without paragraph two.
Okay.
And that will, um, in effect, give you a, a permanent year-long closure.
Councilmember, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
There's also one whereas above that. Do we need to call that out?
Yeah, we can also strike the last whereas clause as well. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Councilwoman Bush, I can see you are all over this. Do you want to make the motion with those two?
I, I move that we adopt the resolution as presented with the omission of the last whereas paragraph and the paragraph numbered two.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yaron Skoladi?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye, that motion carries 5-0. Thank you all. We don't have anything on the Santa Fel successor agency, so this meeting is adjourned.